Good afternoon. In compliance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a work session of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Tuesday, July 19th, 2022, at 6:09 PM. A quorum of the Board are physically present at AIST Central Office to conduct this meeting. Board meetings are open to the public based on space availability to ensure social distancing and the health and safety of our community and staff. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum, Astound Broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. And to our audience tuning in remotely and here in person, welcome and thank you for joining us. We will move to the approval of the agenda. Secretary Singh, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I have.
Is there a second? Having a motion by Secretary Singh and a second by Trustee Zapata to approve the agenda, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by all those on the dais. I should also recognize that Trustee Letitia Anderson has joined us by video. Secretary Singh, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the pledge to the Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, considered a republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored with the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Well, first of all, I just want to say, welcome back, Board of Trustees. I hope you had a nice break, a short break. Tonight is an opportunity for the Board of Trustees to discuss and share feedback on a potential order to call a bond election for November 2022. Currently, the Board is scheduled to take action during a special called voting meeting on Thursday, July 28th, at 6:00 PM. We want to remind the public that this meeting will include an opportunity for public testimony towards any general topic, including but not limited to the potential vote to order a bond election. And the community can also email trustees@trustees@austinisd.org. We are very thankful for the Bond Steering Committee, Long Range Planning Committee, and all of the other staff and community members who have provided input on a bond proposal for discussion by the Board tonight. And tomorrow, the Board Steering Committee is scheduled to meet for their regular meeting at 6:30 PM, and we have also posted the meeting in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act to allow trustees to join and converse in two-way dialogue with the community. This meeting is open to the public, and more information, including how to join virtually or in person, may be found on Board Docs or on the committee webpage at austinisd.org/ advisory-bodies/bsc. Tonight, we'll have a presentation from staff and Bond Steering Committee co-chairs before opening up for questions, comments, feedback, and input from the Board in our governance role. I want to recognize and thank Co-Chair Barbara Corbett Spears, who will either be joining us or has joined us virtually, and then Co-Chair Anastasia Teague for joining us here in person. And Dr. Mays, we'd like to welcome you to your first called meeting of the Board of Trustees as the interim superintendent. And would you introduce our item and staff for tonight's presentation?
I will. So, good evening. Tonight, we continue our discussion on a potential bond for Austin ISD. These proposals represent the future for our students and staff. As a reminder, we began this process last September. Since then, hundreds of people have given their time and energy to make it possible to bring forward these proposals to you. I want to take a moment to thank our Long Range Planning Team, Bond Steering Committee, and the Fab Pack, Facility and Finance Teams, Communications Team, the Equity Team, and AISD staff, students, and families who have been instrumental in providing input and for their work. They have been tireless champions. They have guided us through this work successfully, as many of them were involved in the 2017 bond. We are thankful for the community's support for the 2017 bond. Their trust has been honored with the majority of the 2017 bond projects being completed. And as I say that, I also recognize our lack of communication since the passage of that bond. We have not done a good job of keeping the community informed. My commitment, should the Board decide to pursue a bond, and if it is approved by our community, is to ensure that we provide robust and ongoing communications regarding our bond work. Our community entrusts us with being responsible stewards of taxpayer resources while keeping an equity mindset. Campuses are one very important part of the school experience, and we recognize the role of security, safety environment, and learning centers that are so strongly connected to our facilities and capital projects. Bond programs can help address needed improvements for HVAC classrooms, safety, and accessibility, as well as extracurricular opportunities for our students. They also allow us to prioritize our operational budgets on staff and students instead of maintenance and facilities. Through this process, we remain focused on our number-one goal, preparing all students with the knowledge and skills to thrive in college, career, and life. While we continue to discuss, refine, and communicate on this bond, we are also simultaneously preparing for the opening of schools in August. Our two biggest priorities right now are school safety and hiring. Staff are reviewing safety plans for our campuses and prioritizing facility work around entry points and doors. Next week, principals will receive a toolkit to use with their campus staff and communities to discuss safety, including our safety protocols, reunification process, and emergency plans for each campus. Principals at each campus will also conduct safety walkthroughs prior to the launch of the new school year. We also recognize the important role students and staff play, and will continue to remind them that if they see something, they should say something. This means reporting concerns to teachers, principals, campus leadership, so issues may be immediately addressed. Additionally, staff is preparing a safety update that will be shared with the Board at the next Board Information Session. Our human capital team, in partnership with school leadership, are working nonstop to ensure that we have the best teachers and staff to teach and support our students. It is no secret that Austin ISD, like many school districts across the nation, is challenged with recruiting and retaining students and teachers and staff. We want to continue to discuss recruitment strategies for our high-need schools and hard-to-staff areas, including signing bonuses and competitive pay. Our human capital and school leadership teams have expanded their recruitment efforts at local and statewide events, and we are reviewing other strategies to increase and speed up recruitment efforts. We also know that compensation is only one component of recruiting and keeping staff. People want to feel like they belong, are valued, and are part of the team, and that is why we are gathering feedback on the staff experiences and engagement. We are reviewing a survey that will help us measure teacher engagement, identify strategies to address growth areas, as well as looking to implement a more in-depth exit survey process. This is our current context, and I want to ensure that the trustees and administration staff and community, most importantly, students, are engaged and have the opportunity for continuous feedback. Facility and capital programs, safety and security, and recruitment and retention are all top of mind as we prepare to welcome students to the new school year. We are committed to being the premier district for students and staff. And so, with that being said, thank you, President Rodriguez and trustees, for engaging in this conversation and building on all of the robust engagement that we've had in the previous days. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Matias Segura to lead us off. And Ed Ramos.
Dr. Mays, President Rodriguez, Board of Trustees, I'm very excited, very pleased to be here, presenting to you all all the tremendous work that has been accomplished over the last, really, really, the last year. There's a lot of individuals who've been thanked along the way, and I just can't express to you how proud I am of our community, just spending the time with us to get through this work. Hundreds and hundreds of hours have been spent, and just can't say thank you enough. So, we wouldn't be here without them, and just didn't want to just reinforce that point whenever I possibly can. So, as we move forward through this conversation, we have a couple of objectives that we'd like to lay out. The first is that we want to make sure that the Board understands the differences between the two bond proposals. We want to understand also how these bond proposals came about through the Bond Steering Committee work, and also understand how these projects impacted facilities within each of your districts, within the community, as well as throughout the greater Austin area, throughout the city of Austin. And also understand how the feedback we received along the way has informed the process and how, you know, that information will help inform our process moving forward. So, as we move forward, continuing on to the next slide, what we'd like to talk about is the first, or the draft proposal A. And I do want to point that out, this is indeed a draft proposal. Only the Board can decide or recommend a bond for, recommendation. And this proposal is at $1.5 billion. And as you recall, earlier on in the process, we presented to you all that a $1.5 billion bond proposal would allow us not to have to increase the tax rate. And so, that was really the approach that we took as we started this work. Some of the highlights of the draft proposal A include 14 full or partial campus modernizations, district-wide technology upgrades, competition fields at all high schools, critical deficiencies across the district, and I do want to point out here that this is across the entire district. And I also want to point out that this includes high priority areas, including safety, security, and HVAC. We also have additional security components, including security vegetables, which are an important aspect of how we secure facilities, so wanting to ensure that we include those where we do not have them, as well as additional investment for buses. And one of the things that we're certainly proud of is that this investment will allow us to fully air condition our entire bus fleet. We're not quite there yet, but with this investment, we'll be able to get there, and certainly, we're proud of that. As you move on to the next slide, some of the other highlights I'd like to share with you all include community and partner rooms, kitchen serving upgrades. One of the things that often doesn't get to be talked about is all the equipment that we have in our kitchens, and that these types of equipment can't easily be repaired and are often at end-of-year, end-of-life. And so, we're excited to have the opportunity to present a package that allows us to really address those deficiencies. We also have musical instrument replacement program. This is something that had not been previously incorporated into a bond, and I would also say that through the work of the Long Range Planning Committee, as well as the Bond Steering Committee, it's one of those things that we might have otherwise not been able to identify as a need, but we certainly were able to capture that, and it is included in bond proposal A. As you move on to Slide 7, you'll see a breakdown of the full modernizations versus partial modernizations. You can see here that there are a variety of elementary schools, but also included within this list are Bertha Sadler Means, Travis Early College High School. And so, you know, for us, it's a rare opportunity to be able to improve these types of schools, scale, the deficiencies, the programming. Certainly, we think it's a wonderful opportunity, and we're excited about those being included as well. Partial modernizations are oftentimes a challenge, you know, and so, as we think about, you know, what is included in proposal, we often want to call out, you know, what a partial modernization does. And for elementary schools, it's difficult, but certainly, it can be done. For middle schools and high schools, it's much more of an appropriate strategy. And so, certainly, as you see the breakdown of each of these projects, you'll notice that we were intentional about trying to figure out how we could get as much into this bucket and also try to, you know, do as best we could with what we had. I also want to point out that the sizes and the estimates tied to each of these facilities was really tailored to the site itself, to the condition of the building, the program that the facility supports. And so, you know, in previous efforts back in 2017, even before that, we didn't have as much information to make those informed decisions at this point, so we're very excited about the fact that we just are in a better position to make those refined budgets and bring them forward to you. As we move on to Slide 8, and we begin to talk about draft proposal B, this is a proposal that was brought to us by the Bond Steering Committee. And one of the things that I'll tell you in my observations was that, you know, it's very difficult to put everything that we need into a finite amount. There really is truly infinite need in this organization, and I think what we've acknowledged is that things have just gotten more expensive. And as we began to price things out, which you'll see is, you know, elementary schools that used to cost, you know, $33 to $36 million are now $50 million. And that type of increase is consistent across the market, and it's something that we had to account for. And so, the Bond Steering Committee requested that we consider a draft proposal B, and included within that proposal is everything that we just talked about in bond proposal A, but it also does include additional items, including seven full or partial modernizations, bringing that total to 21. We increased the technology investment to 141 million. One of the unique differences in this proposal is it also considers teacher housing. It's one of the things that has been discussed with the Board, and as we went through the community engagement process, we wanted to make sure we got feedback on that component as well. Additionally, it includes 106 million to additional athletics and visual performing arts improvements. Moving on to Slide 10, you'll see some of the highlighted additional investments. We talked about the additional visual performing arts facilities, additional athletic gym locker improvements at 22 million. And then, one of the things we also wanted to consider and was brought forward by the Bond Steering Committee was the opportunity to relocate some of the life skills classrooms that are in portables back into the classroom. And to do it correctly requires an investment. And so, we identified where those locations are within this organization, and we put dollars, or allocated dollars, to make that change occur. When you move to Slide 11, one of the things that you'll notice is the 21 modernization projects and how that breaks down. On the left slide, where you see the full modernizations, what I want to point you to is to that kind of highlighted, you know, I don't know if it's maybe like a pinkish hue highlight, but these were partial modernizations that we are now considering full. And then, on the right, you'll see new partial modernizations that have come into the proposal. And so, you can see there, you know, the goal was really to take partials in A and bring them full, and then add additional modernizations, though they would be partial, into the program. And so, those two draft proposals are what we'll be discussing today. I'm now going to hand it over to Ed Ramos, our CFO, to discuss some of the financial considerations.
So, as part of the conversation, we also wanted to have a discussion on the tax rate impact. And so, in the proposals that Matias currently went over, you heard that one proposal has a zero tax rate increase impact. The second, larger proposal, has a one-cent tax rate increase. Keeping in mind that when we talk about those two areas and the impact that they have, we're talking about specifically only the debt service side of our tax rate. So, school districts, we have two sections. Our tax rate is composed of two areas, the debt service side, and then the maintenance and operations tax rate. And so, when you've heard about a zero tax rate increase or a one-cent tax rate increase, we're specifically talking about the debt service tax rate. But one of the conversations that we wanted to have is the total tax rate impact, when you bring the entire picture together and you bring in both components of our tax rate together. So, last year, our total tax rate was 1.0617, a little bit over a dollar and six cents. When we passed our budget at the end of June, we proposed a tax rate, a total tax rate of .9966. And so, that was a six-and-a-half-cent reduction over the prior-year tax rate. When you look at proposal A, the $1.55 billion bond, when we say it's a zero tax rate increase, that's to the debt service side, but overall, the total tax rate would still be reduced by six-and-a-half cents if we were to move forward with that proposal. When you look at the larger $2.18 billion proposal, when we talk about a one-cent tax rate increase, that's again to the debt service side, but when you look at the total tax rate, and again, this is part of the reason due to tax rate compression that the state, the current state funding system calculations are composed of, we would be looking at a 5.5 cent total tax rate reduction. So, at the end of the day, depending on which bond proposal or somewhere in between that the Board is looking at, we're either looking at a total tax rate reduction of six-and-a-half cents or five-and-a-half cents. Also, keep in mind that whichever proposal we decide to move forward with, by law, the ballot or the ballot referendums that we have in November, each one will have to say, this is a tax increase. So, even though our total tax rate will be reduced by either five-and-a-half or six-and-a-half cents, by law, we have to put the phrase in all caps, this is a tax increase. So, keeping that in mind. Next slide. Also, you've heard of some estimates as far as the impact to a homeowner, and so, take it into account, let's say, a homeowner has a $650,000 home. The most simplest calculation as far as the tax impact would be to take a penn- The most simplest calculation as far as the tax impact would be to take a penny and take that increase on that home value. So that's when you've heard it's a $65 annual increase. However, understanding that taxes are a little bit more complicated than that, one of the pieces of information that we wanted to highlight is the impact that this current housing market has had on individual property owners. And so you've heard about home market values increasing drastically throughout the city, and you've heard about the homestead exemption that our voters approved statewide in May. And so that increased the homestead exemption from 25,000 to 40,000. Also, as part of this calculation, there is a 10% cap limitation on a homeowner's taxable assessed value. So if you were taxed at a certain amount at a certain value last year, your home can only be taxed at a 10% increase of that value. So that if you look at the first home, home number one, you see, and these are actual homes. So we went throughout the district and pulled actual homes because one of the things that we can't calculate as a district is the increased market value, increased appraisal value. So we took four homes throughout the Austin area. And so the 2021 figure shows the market value of that home last year. The 2022 column shows the increase in market value. You also see the limit that is placed on that home because of that 10% limitation. So that is where the actual tax is going to be calculated. So in example one, last year, the value of that home was 187,589. Even though the home now is appraised at 312,472, that home can only be taxed at 206,348. That puts into account that 10% limitation. Then you compare the increase in homestead exemption. So last year, it was 25,000. This year, it's 40,000. So the actual net amount that that specific home will be taxed at is 166,348. Then you take our total tax rate, last year, 1.0617. This year, assuming the larger bond amount, 1.0066, a 5.5% total tax rate reduction. And so for a home that was valued at 187,000 last year, that value increased to 312,000 this current year, it's a 51, almost a $52 total tax reduction. You take home number three, $738,000 valued home last year. The market value increased to over a million dollars this year. However, they can only be taxed at 812,570. So the total tax impact would be 19934. And the reason we put these examples together is so any homeowner in Austin ISD can look at their Travis Central appraisal district statement, grab their individual homeowner figures, and then calculate the impact to their household. So, yeah, there's a correction on slide 12. The total tax rate is .065, it's missing a zero, versus .6510. In 23 and proposal A.
And so now we'd like to turn it over to Anastasia Teague, who is our bond steering committee, or one of our bond steering committee co-chairs, to share a couple of words with the board.
Hi, everyone. So like you said, I'm Anastasia Teague, one of the co-chairs of the bond steering committee. I'm also on the long-range planning committee as co-chair of the maintenance, transportation, and food service committee. Co-chair Barbara Spears Corbett was going to be with us, but she's unable to join us virtually. So you have me tonight. Okay. With us tonight are also several other committee members from our bond steering committee. I'd love to, if we could maybe get some hand raises for those who are on the bond steering committee? So I'm excited to have several of them join us tonight for the Q and A portion, because I think their expertise will be very helpful. Okay, we were originally tasked with creating a one and a half billion dollar proposal. So how did we end up with a 2.18 proposal that we are recommending? So as we moved through the process and looked at the cost estimates, it was clear to us that we would not have room for all of the critical projects that needed to be included in the bond. By comparison, as you heard from Matias, the larger package includes 21 full or partial modernizations as opposed to 14 in the smaller package. The larger package also includes more technology investments, targeted athletics and visual and performing arts improvements, investments in outdoor learning and playgrounds, phase twos of previous modernization projects such as Hill and LBJ, and moving life skills classes outside of portables. When recommending the larger package, we considered the fact that the tax increase language has to be on the ballot regardless of whether or not it would actually increase the tax rate. If we go with the smaller package, not only are we underfunding critical projects, we're not funding them at all, we run the risk of confusing our community. We considered that even if we tell the community that the bond won't increase their tax rate, they might not actually believe us. We are supporting the proposal that would increase the tax rate and fund more critical projects. This proposal has the added advantage of communicating the large impact of the bond rather than watering down the impact of the bond with messaging of the tax rate that conflicts with the language on the ballot. With a larger package, we can focus on communicating the impact instead of talking about complex tax laws. I know we'll be getting to community feedback in a moment, but one comment I heard over and over again in these sessions when I listened to them last week was confusion over how the schools were selected for modernization. So I wanted to clarify that for you all. So the bond steering committee used recommendations from the long-range planning committee to determine which modernizations to include in the package. The LRP determined or considered three main criteria when recommending schools for modernization, such as, these three are: poor facility condition, high neighborhood vulnerability, and the population of underserved students at the schools. The schools that had an overlap of these three were more likely to be recommended for modernization. This was a data-driven, equity-based methodology, which is different from the worst-first methodology of the past. Once we determined modernizations, we considered strategies from the LRP committees. We, when it became clear we could not include everything from each strategy, members of our committee were willing to remove certain items, meaning of the 17 members on our bond steering committee, 11 were from the long-range planning committee. So a lot of expertise and a lot of representation on our committee. For example, the visual and performing arts co-chairs were, let's see, they were willing to compromise a strategy in order to focus on modernizing our high-opportunity schools. There were multiple conversations about technology and the importance of one-to-one devices. Other strategies were community partner rooms and community pantries. We also discussed, when all at every campus received these upgrades, we had a discussion about which campuses would benefit most from receiving them. The 2.1 billion dollar proposal also includes more academic investment, like I said, such as outdoor learning spaces, improvements to pre-K and life skills. So it's another reason, of course, why we support the larger package. So we really look forward to collaborating with all of you tomorrow night at our bond steering committee meeting. We understand the board has final say in what's included in the bond, but we also know the work of the bond steering committee and the long-range planning committee. Many members of the community who've attended outreach events and other activities will be honored by the board in its final decision. Thank you for having us here tonight to talk about the bond steering, why we created the two proposals and why we have a strong preference for the larger one. Before we close, I want to personally thank the members of the long-range planning committee and the bond steering committee for their hundreds of hours of work, for their expertise, energy, passion, dedication, and thoughtful work throughout this process. We look forward to answering any questions you may have about our work during the Q and A. And I think up next is the community feedback from Ellie.
Thank you so much, Anastasia. Good evening, Dr. Mays and trustees. I'm pleased to have the privilege of sharing the results of our recent engagement efforts with you tonight. I want to first recognize that while you may only see a handful of us up here, it truly was an all-hands-on-deck effort by multiple departments. I think we've done a lot of acknowledging of the bond steering committee members and LPC. I also just want to acknowledge that throughout the entire year, that behind that was very large teams coming from many departments, in addition to doing their day jobs. So the highlights that I'm going to share tonight are a summary of what we heard over the course of four community conversations. There were two virtual and two in person, one north and one south this past weekend. As you can see, the summary reflects input from over 650 people who represented 107 of our 113 schools. Just over half identified as parents, 18% as teachers. And I will note that student engagement is an area of growth for us, but we're excited by some of the gains that we've made throughout this process, and we're looking forward to strengthening those efforts in future endeavors. As far as demographics, 65% of respondents identified as white, 24 as Hispanic or Latino, 11% black, 2% Asian, and 2% Indigenous or Native American, and 3% preferred not to respond, which is actually a very small percentage. We often have a lot more that prefer not to. But comparing that to our district-wide demographics of, we have 55.5% Hispanic or Latino, 30.1% white, 6.6% black, 4.5% Asian, and 3.8% as other. So in an effort to correct for the under-representation of our Spanish-speaking families, we did schedule an additional opportunity this week, this Thursday evening, that will be facilitated fully in Spanish. Our other events, we had translation with Spanish-language facilitative breakouts. But we really wanted to make sure that, there was a lot of information shared, and we think, looking back, it was probably a misstep to not just go ahead and offer that initially, but we wanted to make sure that we made the opportunity available. And we will be sure that we quickly turn around that feedback and compile it for the board and the bond steering committee to review. And Matias is going to talk a little bit about what the timeline looks like between now and that July 28th that we're aiming for. So at the time of print, 52% of respondents expressed preference for proposal B. That's the 1.28 billion, which involves that 1.1 cent tax rate increase. 23% preferred proposal A. That's the 1.55 that would not need the tax rate increase. And then there were 25% that were still unsure. I will add that we, 100% of the 20-something folks who wrote to us on Let's Talk, shared that they preferred proposal B. There seemed like there might have been a little campaign with the folks who wanted to emphasize the need for investments in safety and security and the future of our public schools. Next, I will get to some of the key themes. So let's start with what folks are excited about. First, folks appreciated investments in safety and security, and were happy to see the companion investment in mental health spaces. Many were excited to see the list of full modernizations, and we think the appeal of fitting in more full modernizations is part of what might have tipped the scale toward proposal B. Folks shared that they were excited about improvements to the competition fields and our proposal to address some of the open learning concept spaces in some of our elementaries, though they would like, there was mention that they would like to see all of those spaces addressed. I believe that we have a table for y'all that identifies which schools those are. And while there were lots of questions, there was excitement about the possibility of teacher housing. And of course, folks were happy to hear that both proposals address critical deficiencies district-wide, particularly HVAC. As far as concerns, much like the safety investments were the number one thing we heard in terms of the things people liked, on the other side of that coin, we fielded a lot of questions regarding whether what we're proposing is enough. We heard requests to rekey the district and provide doors that lock from the inside, and there were lots of questions regarding how effective secure vestibules would be at some of our larger secondary campuses with many points of entry. A fair number of folks brought up the district's portable reduction plan, and were hoping to see us make a bigger dent in our reliance on portables, and this was also tied with the safety concerns. Another big topic of discussion centered around discrepancies between the recommended timeline that was outlined in the 2017 Facility Master Plan and these two bond proposals. The bond steering committee did discuss the 2017 plans, and though there is a great deal of alignment, there were some full or phased modernizations that didn't make it into either proposal that had been previously lined up next on the 2017 FMP. We have included a table that highlights the differences between the two 2022 proposals and the 2017 Facility Master Plan. The majority of feedback that we got regarding what we might have missed or what folks were maybe hoping to see but didn't, in terms of specific campuses, centered around those discrepancies and a handful of other facilities that have particularly poor facility assessment scores. We also heard a lot of interest in teacher housing, but a desire for more information before folks make up their minds. And for this reason, we are hosting an additional community conversation next Wednesday evening to share more about what that could possibly look like and to hear from teachers. And of course, if it is ultimately included in the bond proposal, we would facilitate a much deeper engagement process once that's approved and moving forward. As far as the ideas for how we can strengthen the proposals, like I mentioned before, we received lots of requests to take a closer look at what we told our campus communities they could expect to see next from the 2017 bond, particularly those campuses that just barely missed the cut back in 2017, missed that cut for modernization. Another common topic was enrollment and wanting to make sure that we are projecting anticipated enrollment when determining the appropriate size to build, both in terms of accommodating future growth and right sizing for smaller campus populations. That concern was often tied to concerns about investing in schools that might be considered for closure. There's still, I think, a sense in the community that that might be something the district would be looking at. And so I think we have some bond steering committee members who would be willing to kind of share their thought process about the strategic investments they are trying to make with some of these proposals to invest in some of these schools and confront some of our enrollment challenges. A few other common themes included wanting a better understanding of what a one-cent tax rate increase would mean in terms of a tax bill, and I think that Chief Ramos covered that pretty well. And so lastly, I would just like to highlight a few of the statistics from our exit survey. We're pleased to share that 18% of respondents indicated that this was their first district event that they participated in, and that 78% felt that district staff was actively engaged in discussion. And I don't think that I've ever seen fewer disagrees or strongly disagrees in our exit surveys than we saw with this event series. So we're pleased with that. So those are just a few, maybe not just a few. A lot of highlights, I know that my colleagues and I would be happy to, along with our bond steering committee members, would be happy to take questions regarding what we heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. So as we wind down here, I wanted to spend a little bit of time kind of sharing with you all the process, just a little bit of the history of how we got here. One of the things that I will tell you is that, you know, I believe that AIST is in the forever business. You know, we're in generational business. And so when you think about how we support students and staff, we have to think in long terms of time. And that requires us, you know, doing assessments, it requires us self-evaluating, it requires us to collect information to make the best decision we can with the information we have. And this process that we're going through now was rooted in a process prior to this work, back in, you know, 2015 and 2017, even prior to that. And so, you know, as you can see here, in 2015 and 2017, the district went through a process that included the FAP PAC, or what we call today the Facility and Bond Planning Advisory Committee. And this group was brought together to really develop the long-range planning effort as well as the foundation for the 2017 bond. One of the things that was identified in that process was that we needed to really, you know, do a better job of including some of the other academic components within the district, you know, technology, athletics, visual performing arts. And so in 2019, we updated the Facility Master Plan to include some of those elements. And then when we started this process in 2021, we really wanted to even expand that further to include safety, security, and resiliency, as well as, you know, transportation, food service, and the service center. And so that work, you know, really started in earnest in, you know, spring of 2021. And I will tell you, you know, all of this work has been done using a methodology that hasn't been attempted at this scale, equity by design model. And I will also tell you that it's been done, the middle of a pandemic, through Winter Storm Yuri, it's been done through a lot of things that are competing for time, which is why you'll hear me say over and over again how just grateful I am for the time that our committees have spent with us. And so here we are today, you know, at this point, with the work that the bond steering committee has completed, and we're all eager to get feedback from you all to refine this and to bring it forward to you all for consideration. As far as next steps go, the bond steering committee will meet tomorrow. They're eager to get feedback and have a dialogue with the board regarding process and some of the considerations within each of the proposals. We will, you know, upon direction from the board, make adjustments and move forward, ultimately, you know, moving towards a July 28th special board voting meeting where we're expecting that this would be brought forward. Just to let everybody know, to recall the date, you know, the deadline for the board to call the actual election is August 27. to call the actual election is August 22nd. One of the things that we've heard through this process is that it's important to get these projects out there, right, to communicate what they are. And I think, you know, the reason for this adjustment has been to allow for that time so that we have that opportunity to communicate and engage with our community. And so with that, we will be more than happy to answer any questions, and everybody behind me is available to address any questions or comments that y'all might have. So thank you for the time.
Thank you all for the presentation and the information. Before I recognize trustees, we'd like to remind both our community and our trustees that tonight's meeting is an opportunity for feedback and questions. Following tonight's meeting, the Bond Steering Committee meetings, and the final community meetings, the administration will gather feedback and plan to bring a recommendation to the full board for consideration next Thursday, July 28th. And so to help facilitate tonight's discussion, I'd like to call on each trustee across the dais and on Zoom to allow you to ask your first question. And to provide everyone an opportunity to comment, we'll call on each trustee before going back to trustees for a second or future round of questions. The administration has shared that it's helpful for trustees to be clear when they're asking for clarification, making requests for additional considerations for inclusion in a bond recommendation or providing any other feedback or input. It is also helpful for other trustees to echo support for potential inclusions or changes to help in preparing for next Thursday's meetings. So trustees, I'd like to start with trustee Foster. If we can start with you. I know trustee Anderson is on virtual, and she'll get the last question in the first round, and then we'll go through. And if you want to pass, that's okay, I'll go back to you, but if I can just start this way and kind of go.
Yeah, I'll pass.
Okay. Trustee Ashi.
I would love to hear the reason for partial modernizations at the elementary level.
So I'll start, and then perhaps, in a stage if you could maybe chime in. My observations were that when the Bond Steering Committee was trying to include as many campuses to get to a modernization, it was very difficult to do full modernizations within the $1.55 billion kind of threshold. And so the approach was to break them up into phased modernizations at that time, and so that's what we brought forward. Do you want to say anything?
Yeah, so I think the smaller package has more of those partial modernizations that are like that, where we wanted a full modernization, but we didn't have the funds to do that. I can say, in those meetings, we did have concerns about partial modernizations, especially because, you know, the community might look at the results of the 2017 bond and say, oh, look at all of these new schools, and then this one, and say, what did you do? Why are these half-done? So there are concerns about that, and I think it's something that the smaller package, it's a weakness in the smaller package. The larger one does fully fund those schools that we wanted a full modernization for. There are partial modernizations, but I remember them being intentional. We had, I believe, Odom and Williams on the partial because we wanted to put doors and walls in their classrooms. So that was why, you know, they don't need a full building, but hey, they need doors and walls.
Support, clarity. President Rodriguez, is it, I know you said one question, so I'm kind of trying to make sure that I'm, especially since I'm the first one to ask one, I want to set the precedent and make sure that I'm doing this accurately, because I do have thoughts about that answer, but I'm not sure if this is how you want that to happen.
Yeah, if it's about the topic, I think it's, I'm sorry, if it's about the same topic, you can ask sub-questions to it. I think we're not trying to, we're trying to make sure that we have as much robust conversations and allow all the other trustees to go through their rounds of questions. So if you have something, that you have a comment or you want to deepen that question, absolutely, you can ask that.
Okay. So I do want to go ahead and express my issues with doing partials at the elementary level. I have some problems with that, and I think that the tendency tends to be, oh, this school got something in the last bond, and so it makes it very difficult for those schools to then have something completed in future bonds. And I believe that elementary school level is the age that we should get in, fix, and get out, and let those campuses, especially as those are the ages we're trying, we want to be the least disruptive. And so I would like to just go ahead and voice that I am not in support of partials. And maybe, Mr. Matias, Mr. Segura, sorry, you may want to, if you feel like I'm misunderstanding the definition of a partial, that would be, I think that would be great if I'm misunderstanding what that means.
No, trustee Ashi, you're not. One of the things that we, there are two things. The first thing is that when we worked with the Bond Steering Committee to define a modernization, we wanted to be clear, there are a variety of ways that we can get to a full modernization, right? You saw that with Sanchez and Norman Sims, you know, that is a, those are modernized facilities. They're beautiful facilities. We also have opportunities to do that where we have, you know, facilities that require a complete tear-down and rebuild. I will tell you, from a operations perspective, we do not want to have elongated periods of construction, so a phased approach would require, you know, perhaps up to eight years of construction within a 12-year period. We know that's disruptive. We also know that from a design perspective, from a true, like, efficiency regarding how you implement a modernized facility, you know, not having limitations on what's there actually improves the final solution significantly. You know, if I have to build something knowing that this has to be intact, I limit what I can do over the entire site. And so, no, your understanding of it is correct. It's not our preference, but we do understand that it has happened in the past.
And I also want to take this brief opportunity because of all of the amazing people who have served on the Long Range Planning Committee and on the Bond Steering Committee, I hope and want to make sure I say out loud that my questions or thoughts or opinions or representation of my constituency is with the most respect for all of the work and time and time away from your families and evenings where you didn't get to have dinner with your families. I want to make sure that that is, that I'm saying that out front because I have been in your shoes, and I do not want any misguided thought that I am not appreciative of the work or the opinions because I 100% understand the desire to get as many schools touched as possible. So I just, that is my opinion, particularly as it pertains to elementary campuses, and I will yield to the next trustee.
Thank you for modeling that question. Trustee Wagner.
Thank you for all of that. Definitely on the same page on those notes. I, just to start off, I think, I just wanted to kind of come back to something that we heard in the community engagement summary, and that is the thing I think that's giving me a lot of heartburn right now, and we went to the community with very, very heavy engagement, very high level of voter support in the 2017 bond. I think a lot of voters came to the table ready to support that bond with the understanding that their community would be next. And it feels a little like we've moved the goalposts because now there are a handful of schools that are not receiving the modernizations that the 2017 FMP draft detailed that they would. And I appreciate having the side-by-side comparison, but I think I want to maybe go just one step further to ask, what have you all, knowing what the Bond Steering Committee has brought forward in terms of their analysis, how is administration now taking that work and comparing it against those promises and basically modeling a strategic approach for how we address those changes so that those communities do feel heard and valued and that they weren't short-changed in the process?
Trustee Wagner, as part of the backup, you know, we wanted to show kind of what was included in 2017, what was included in the 2022 bond program, Plan A and Plan B. And there are several schools that were identified within the 2017 Facilities Master Plan that are not included in either proposal, but I'm also happy to say that there also is alignment. And so, you know, we're certainly aware that there is a deviation, and, you know, one of the things that we're seeking to hear from the board is any ideas on how you would like us to address that. Certainly for us, you know, there is obviously need across the district. There are, there have been some changes over the course of the last several years, and we need to be very clear as to what change caused what school to either maintain its position as far as modernization or to perhaps move out. But certainly, if there is a desire to evaluate those, because there are funds already allocated to them for critical deficiencies, you know, we can consider that. We're looking to refine as appropriate.
Well, I think I can speak for myself, but I feel like we have to do the due diligence of exploring and seeing how they fit because we do have a promise to be table.
You're Mike. Excuse me. I will say, speaking for myself, that I feel like we do need to do the exploration to find out what those modernizations would cost that were promised in 17. I imagine some of that legwork has already been done due to us having totals for critical deficiencies. I don't feel like I can advise or make a decision on how to proceed until I understand what those impacts are. And by impacts, I mean what the cost impact would be of including those campuses and what we would potentially be losing off of our list of projects if we were to include them, and comparing the relative state of those campuses in terms of functionality, security, structural integrity, all of those pieces and parts. But right now, I don't feel like I have adequate information to be able to offer you a solution. Instead, I feel like I need more information from you for us to be able to weigh the approach.
So to clarify, what I'm hearing is a need to provide the cost for modernizing the campuses that are not included in either proposal that were included in the 2017 FMP. And also, one of the things I would ask is, one of those is a middle school, and historically middle schools are very difficult to do all at once. And so what I think our team will do is offer, you know, perhaps a phased solution for that, just because secondary schools, we typically would want to do those if we can in phases unless the site offers itself for a complete demolition rebuild.
That's what I, in my speaking as one trustee, would appreciate. I realize that's more work for your team, but I feel like, and I want to make sure that I'm being very specific about what projects I'm speaking about. Those would be the 1 through 6 that didn't make the cut last time, because there are a couple of schools that fell below the line in terms of us trying to fit within a total bond amount that would raise the tax rate last time. And then there are additional schools on the 1 through 12 list that are not included as well. And just to be really clear, most of the schools are out, I think only one of them is in my district, all the other ones are in other parts of Austin. So this isn't trying to get all the cookies for District 7. This is about keeping our promise.
Understood, and we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Singh. Oh, I'm happy to go. Okay, so I have a few questions, not questions, just clarifications. I think one, I really appreciated the comment, and I can't remember which speaker said about portables and the fact that, you know, I think since I was tried to in the 2008 Bond Advisor Committee, I used to ask, how much time, what's the definition of temporary for a portable? Because portables are allegedly supposed to be about being temporary, and I know some of those are 15 years in our school, so I think it's important. And I think you're about to correct me to say there's more than that, so I really appreciate that. I think I want to express my support for workforce housing for our staff, which includes our teachers. I think that's really important. At the same time, I know that some of the presentations you showed us, 83% of our staff is at 80% MFI, which means either they can afford a rent or not rent at all. So I think we're going to have to challenge ourselves about that, I think, in the next budget, considering the fact that we just passed a balanced budget. And what I might do is ask you what, I think I feel like I'm asking every single contractor and person who tries to sell me something, which is, can you do a little bit better? And what I mean by that is, based on my experience as a municipal finance bond lawyer, I would hope that you would go back to your, to our financial advisor and see if you can figure out how to do some refunding of bonds to increase the bond capacity. And then look at, I think you've already mentioned, cost savings of some of the projects that have been combined together, which allows there to be no tax rate increase, but an increase in our bond capacity to ensure that our board has the flexibility to ensure that we're prioritizing those things that we need. And just to be clear, that means in addition to the 1.5. I don't mean to say that we're about to do something completely different. And with that said, and I'll stop with this comment. I think it's really important in this next year to ensure that we prioritize maximizing the local dollars staying in our community. This bond package, 100% of this money is going to stay here, but I also think there's other opportunities, whether it's in the legislative session, increasing the basic allotment, which I think trustee Singh has been very vocal about, and other efforts, like what Ed has been vocal himself about discounts around our prepayment of recapture. I don't want to go any further, but I think, I think there is a strategy to look at, how do we maximize our local dollars in the short term in the bond package, in the midterm in the legislative, and then in the long term as well? Because at the end of the day, our kids, our children, and our staff and our teachers deserve us to fight for keeping as many dollars as we can in our local community. So I'll turn it over to trustee Singh.
Thank you. Echo what President Rodriguez just said about dollars that stay in Austin. So I have a really specific question, which is, based on what you all said, that security was really important for our families and staff. And so along those lines, I would be really interested to know which campuses, so one of the things I heard was, people were like, okay, they were very appreciative of the secure vestibules that are being proposed for every campus, correct? Okay. And so I have also heard parents asking about internal safety as well, specifically classroom doors. So my question is, which campuses currently do not have classrooms, classroom doors? Which ones will get classroom doors in Proposal A and B? And which campuses would still be without classroom doors, even if A or B passes?
So first, let me list off those campuses that have what we call open concepts. And so for those who have never visited a campus that has this concept, it often, it's very, I mean, to use a, I mean, it's very open. You almost have to go through classrooms to get to other classrooms. Many times, there aren't walls that actually extend to the ceiling, and oftentimes, there isn't an actual door. It's often kind of a curtain or some type of sliding partition. So trustee Singh, to your point, they're not enclosed spaces the way we think of classrooms elsewhere in the district. Of all of our campuses, there are currently five. One of them, well, there was a 1.6 until long ago, but that school's been modernized, and that was Manchaca. But now we have Odom Elementary School, Williams Elementary School, Oak Hill Elementary School, Cook Elementary School, and Houston Elementary School. Oak Hill Elementary School, Cook Elementary School, and Houston Elementary School. And I will say, as Anastasia mentioned, one of the things that the Bond Steering Committee wanted to consider was, if a partial modernization could improve the academic spaces within a, within a school, then that perhaps may be one of the ways that a partial could be considered. Now, as far as what's included in Proposal A, I have to quickly, quickly look, just because I have, we have Houston as a partial, and I believe that is it. And then for Proposal B, we do include Odom. We do include Williams. These are, again, both partials. Houston as well. And then, Odom, Williams, Houston. But I, but Oak Hill and Cook are not included. So, so that's the breakdown. So let me kind of.
Thank you. And I know that, I don't know what the opportunity score was for Oak Hill. Or what was the other one? Cook? But if it was relatively high, I would be very curious to see if that's something that could be considered to be put into this, into one of these proposals.
So to, to make sure I understand the question, Trustee Singh. The opportunity score, so evaluate the opportunity score across these campuses. And, and if the opportunity score was high or higher, if those could be considered additionally for inclusion as far as a modernization or partial modernization to address that specific issue?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, just, and the reason I said, I mentioned the opportunity score was just to be consistent with what the Bond Steering Committee was considering, the lens that you've been using anyway. Thank you.
So we can certainly do that. Trustee about that?
The item I'd like to address is the, is one that has been a serious issue for our students is the mental health space. So I'm very happy to see that that's part of the bond package to create that space that is so needed at every campus because that issue is affecting every single campus. So, so, you know, I was able to, to talk to staff briefly about how that process will be and that that becomes part of every campus culture to ensure that our students have those issues met. Because if we don't take time to really address that and provide the space for that to happen for our students on campus, then student learning isn't going to happen. So I just wanted to share that I appreciate that, that was part of this bond and that the bigger package would be able to serve more schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee. Trustee Lou.
All right. Thank you. I want to echo Trustee Ashes, and I'm sure all of our appreciation for the work that the Long Range Planning Committee members and Bond Steering Committee members have contributed, as well as the hours that our staff have contributed as well. So, I've got 500 questions, but I will ask one. So I'm looking at the, in the back of the binder that we were provided, it has those conversation summaries, and I really, I love it. Beautifully done and super informative. So, how are, where would one find the answers to the questions that people posed?
So we're working on, we would be, we'll be scouring all of the, we obviously highlighted just a few of the questions, and there are a lot more. So we'll be working on an FAQ. We, what we did was when we were in the meetings for the community, the community conversations themselves, I'm sorry. When we were in the community conversations themselves, we let folks know that if we did not get to their question, to submit it through Let's Talk. And I think we did have a pretty good response rate of, I felt my questions were answered. So we were really trying to close that feedback loop while we were in the meetings themselves. So I don't, so as far as these, the remaining questions, we would use that to inform, kind of compiling an FAQ of what things we still need to answer for folks. So it's going to vary. Some of them might be a question that the ultimate bond proposal is going to be a response to. Right? And others might be things that, you know, we need to do a better job explaining how this or how that.
So just for the benefit of the public, because I could hear you, but I was like, I was using my 45-year-old ears. I was like, oh, I can barely hear. But for the benefit of the public, so bottom line is, some of the questions that were asked during those community conversations, some of the questions were answered during the conversations. The trustees don't have a copy of written responses, nor the questions. That's accurate. Okay. So that's one. And two, there are some questions that were asked that night, and participants were asked to then submit their questions through Let's Talk. Did I get that right?
We made every effort to get through all of the questions through the chat and that were verbalized if they, we, at the end, because we had twice, we had two opportunities in the meeting for Q and A, if district-wide conversation and then the regional. So at the end, we said, if we didn't make it to your question, that was when they were invited to submit it through Let's Talk.
Okay, so if the, and again, and just for the benefit of the public. Okay, so if their question happened to not be captured during the meeting, then they were encouraged, like, you know, go to Let's Talk, submit it there. And as far as the trustees have been informed, those questions haven't been answered.
I have responded to all of the Let's Talk questions that have come in to date. I think it was hovering around 30.
But the answers and questions haven't been provided to the trustees? That's, is that an accurate statement?
That is accurate. We could probably pull a report for that, if you would like.
And then, the other piece is that you had mentioned that there were questions that were documented during the meeting, but that have not yet been answered. Some of the questions may be answered through the final bond proposal. And then I'm wondering, I mean, there are some great, like, even just looking at some of these, I think they'd be great talking points for trustees. Like, a great example is, you know, why does X school get an additional 14 million? Seems unfair, right? Why is AISD getting into the business of teacher housing? Like, those are good questions. And my colleagues already know that I overuse this phrase, but if we believe in what we're doing, then we need to be able to proactively communicate that information. And I think, you know, to the extent that we can use those questions that were captured, let's be prepared for the questions that we're going to get. Because this is pretty, I feel like this, these questions are pretty reflective of what we're going to hear. So that's it.
Trustee Lugo, thank you for that, that feedback. And so, tonight is really about, you know, making those improvements on the design process. When we talk about engagement and we talk about making the product and the process stronger, that feedback is helpful. I know, within the small groups, that we've had the conversation about FAQs and being able to provide that information back, so we appreciate that.
Thank you. Want to thank all my colleagues for their questions, share my appreciation as well. And very specifically, want to share my appreciation for the committee's big thought about owning a tax increase and running with it and thinking bigger. I feel like Austin and, Austin and I, you don't do that often enough. And I really appreciate that you went there and have given us that opportunity. And I appreciate hearing a sample of what our community, how our community has responded. I hear the excitement from the committee, and it's nice to hear the excitement from the, from the community as well so far. So thank you for that. Appreciate President Rodriguez connecting the bond dollars to the state funding. We know that we are in the bottom 10 states in per-student funding, that the state caps what we can spend on our students, and that these dollars are a way to show our community's value for education and to, you know, choose to invest in our schools in a way beyond what Texas has chosen to do as we continue to advocate. And Mr. Ramos, I appreciate your advocacy, and I know, you know, many, many people are doing that work as well, and we have a chance to take some action locally. So thank you for that. And appreciate hearing that there is a plan to go deeper into the possibilities of housing with the people who might occupy the housing. So thank you for that. I really appreciate hearing that's coming, and I look forward to joining that conversation as well. I have a question for, probably for the committee and for you, Anastasia, and any staff who want to answer. I heard that some of the community were asking about enrollment and how that was factored in. And I, and hear that it was factored in. And I know that there's, if you look at some of the proposals for modernization, the sizes are different. Sometimes the sizes are bigger, sometimes the sizes are smaller, depending on the need. And I would love to know a little bit more about enrollment forecasting and how that planning went into your process, and, and, you know, how that's baked into the choices that were made. And then also, would love to have some information about the impact of the 2017 bond in schools that were modernized, especially schools that are most analogous to high opportunity schools, the impact of those, whether, whether we saw an impact on enrollment of those campuses. You know, how have those campuses impacted the community? And what do the people who are using those schools have to say about the lived experience of being in those schools? You know, all the modernized schools, and especially if, if the idea is to create opportunity and hope that it has an impact on enrollment, on student growth, on student experience. I would love to know more about what we have so far. We have a living lab, and I would love to kind of put those two things together. Thank you.
So your first question was if we considered enrollment in the modernizations. There were definitely conversations about that. We have several people on our committee who I would say have an expertise in that area and worked really closely with Matias. So I actually would like to, you know, maybe hand it over to Matias to talk about those conversations that you had.
Trustee Boswell. So one of the things that, that we tried to do was to facilitate a collaborative, like equity-based conversation. And so, we often would bring information that was asked of us. And so, you know, I think our team did a really good job finding information, providing information. And then we would, you know, distill that at the request of the Long Range Planning Committees or the Bond Steering Committee, and then we'd present that. And then it'd be a conversation, and it would progress. So I can tell you, there were a lot of conversations around it. I think one of the things that we acknowledged is that there isn't necessarily a one-size-fits-all solution for AISD. You know, in 2017, we did have, I wouldn't call them standards, but we did have kind of, does, you know, capacity goals by campus type. And I think one of the things that we're seeing is that, once we get into these schools that are, you know, have more site constraints, they're in, you know, they don't have as much area. There are just different limitations. The programs are different. You know, we really need to tailor the investment to the school. And so, it was considered in that way, and that's why you see it reflected in the budget. I don't know that it was considered as far as determining whether someone was in or out as far as campus goes, but I think it was considered as far as, you know, what the investment would be, just because it impacts the cost. As far as 2017 bond program goes, one of the things that we're actually very excited to be able to share, because we have heard this through the community and also through other, through various groups, is that, you know, understanding what the utility reduction costs and improvement, improvement efficiency has been since we've been able to deliver these schools. What has been the students' and user experience? You know, how do our teachers feel about working in these spaces? I will tell you, it wasn't fortunate that, you know, we were in the middle of a pandemic, so we kind of missed that first year, and our schools weren't fully occupied. But we do have that information now, and some of it is anecdotal because we can't necessarily survey it and quantify it in a, in a, maybe a way that I would like to. But we can provide information and, and, you know, experiences that our, our staff and community has, you know, that they, that they've experienced, really, you know, as they've been in these new facilities. One of the things I will tell you, however, is that, you know, we do know just that through the pandemic, the way that our facilities were used, we've noticed that our modernized facilities performed much better. You know, being able to use collaboration spaces, the studios, breakdown spaces in a completely different way and still maintain visual, you know, sightlines. The HVAC systems are much improved. You know, we, we talk about, you know, with the pandemic, you know, what we learned from the pandemic, and that's, that's that we have to have improved air quality. We have to have improved climate, you know, temperature, hot and cold, and also circulation. And many times, our older facilities are kind of cobbled together over a series of improvements that go back decades and decades. And you cannot improve them to the extent that we would like to improve them to combat something as such, as a pandemic. So we learned a lot. We have information. Some of it is quantifiable. Some of it is based on just kind of anecdotal information. But we, we can share that, and we tend to share that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, you know, I think this gets back to wanting to build schools that we know we can support and have students there to get all the benefit from it. I think, you know, the hope is, I know what we've seen, what happened at Eastside. We've seen what happened at TA Brown, that they were full instantly. And just the more information we have about how these schools have performed in terms of enrollment is valuable. And we also know that a school, a new school building is just a building until you have the people inside it, occupying it, using it. And that what happens in that building is just as much a part of what draws people there as anything else. So, you know, kind of having, the more we can have about that, I think the more helpful it would be to make sure that we're putting investments where we know people will be, or where we know we can draw people back. Because I know that is, that is powerful, that increases our funding, that does really important things. So thank you for anything you can share about that.
Thank you, Trustee Boswell. Trustee Foster. She wanted to go last. Yeah, Trustee, she wanted to go last.
No, no question still. But I do just want to take a moment to express gratitude for all the work that's gone in. I think this is about the third iteration of watching this sort of process go on, and I'm always blown away by how many Austinites show up and show up so deeply. So it's really impressive. And I share, I think it was Trustee Boswell and a couple of other folks, comments and excitement and feedback around the choice to consider or put another option on the table that is the kind of, I guess, someone said, a go-big option, which I had not been open to before. But the rationale for it and the thought behind it, I find super compelling. And I'm excited for, and this is something that President Rodriguez spoke to. The thing that excites me about this type of funding is the idea of the bang for the buck. It's horrible that so much of our money is sort of discounted. It goes away before we see it. And this is money that we can, or you, you know, you all can help us figure out the best ways to spend a dollar. And for us actually to have that whole dollar go to the project at hand is super exciting and super compelling. So just thank you for all the work that's, that's gone into this so far. And I know we're not quite there yet, even in this round. Before, if we then make the decision, we'll have to go hard in terms of helping the public understand the hows and whys in details. And I'm excited to help, help do that for y'all and for us.
Thank you, Trustee Foster. Trustee Anderson?
So a couple of comments. My first one has to do with Delco. Well, not really a comment, but a request for Delco. Is there an opportunity to see what the, the scoring is related to the roofing, to have that addressed as well in the cost? Because to me, if you're having challenges with a roof or portions of it and trying to upgrade the kitchen, like, I, I don't understand the rationale behind it. And I just would like to see what the cost would be to address those areas of the roof that need attention. I also wanted to give a shout out to Bertha Sallamains, Ms. Robie and her team. I know many of you have talked about enrollment, have talked about academics. They've actually increased their enrollment, and their academics has went up, the scoring of the campus. The campus. The campus before Ms. Robie got there was an F. That has gone up to a C and I'm looking forward to it going up even higher. So, there are things that are going on at that campus that I am just, I'm excited to see. And for me, I will not be supporting any bond that pulls any district on campus out for there. That's where I am. Thank you.
Trustee Anderson, we will certainly kind of look a little bit, dive a little bit deeper into Delco and present back some additional information. One of the things that I think about when I think about Delco is usability and just, you know, how that facility is used within our community. And just thinking back over the last couple of years, you know, it's, it's been a testing center, it's been a vaccination site, in the past it's been a shelter, it's been graduation, it's been graduation site for us, it's been a lot of different things. And so, I think I would also provide maybe some ideas, maybe not big ideas, but little ideas on how we could improve it to make it more usable. You know, I just thinking back to graduation, you know, we couldn't use that site and there are some minor improvements that we could potentially include that would make it more usable for, for us and for our community. And so, you know, we can certainly pull that together and provide that.
I mean, Delco, it's, it's a great space and I do hope that in the near future, you look to how, how it can be utilized more. I mean, it's, it has all that space and it's just sitting there, like there is so much more that could be done with it. And, you know, my, my hope is, is if, to become a Wilhelmina Delco, you know, Center for Professional Learning, that's my brain. But I look forward to the information I'll get to see what you'll bring to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Anderson. So, trustees, we've gone through one round of kind of questions, comments, and then we'll go through another one and then see where we're at. I know I'd start again with Trustee Foster, although I think he's already spoken.
I'm good.
You're good. Trustee Ashi?
You can keep doing that to me, aren't you, Trustee Foster? You keep, you keep passing. So, I'm, I would love to kind of speak to some of the constituent concerns that I have had spoken to me quite recently. And it has to do with the timing of the drop of the proposals that we've received, the initial proposals that we received in July, when most of our parents and families are disconnected and taking a well-understood and deserved break from school and school environments. And the very short window of time that we have placed before trustees to try to get as much feedback as possible and still vote on it in July, knowing that a lot of our families are going to be harder to reach. And I have heard a lot from constituents when talking about the comparison between the 2017 bond and this current iteration of a bond in that the discussions that actually occurred well before they actually voted on the bond package that had to do with what was then called the Facility Master Plan and is now the Long Range Plan. Because when that passed in April, it really was a blueprint for which the trustees of that current board used to create a bond proposal. And so, communities were still in schools, they were still discussing it, there was a lot of community engagement that was going on around that. And so, there was a greater understanding of what a potential bond package could be that then was voted on in June, understanding that there would be a big buildup that would be coming in August. But families felt like they had a much better understanding of how the proposals came to be, how the, what, how the data was used to create what those were, what those were going to look like. And so, I am wondering and curious, what is the strategy going to be communications-wise to help people understand that if they've missed this very short window with which to give their feedback on the bond proposal? What, like I, as a trustee, am unable to answer that. I, I don't have any answer for that right now. Because there, there's, I've had a lot of people who've been reaching out to me going, whoa, 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 I'm hearing something, but it's not as many as even normally when we would have like a September, October, you know, December, January, March, hot topic, if you will. And it's still a lower number of people that I'm hearing from. So, I have some concerns about that because we're going to all of a sudden be proposing a bond package that many people are not going to understand how we got to where we are. And so, I'm curious about what the bond, what the strategy is, what's the communication strategy going to be moving forward with that?
So, there's a lot that contributed to how we got to this place and I think Mr. Matias can share a little bit of that. I see Dr. Holly back there too, she can probably contribute to that dialogue. But we are here right now, we are again, of course, open to the feedback. We are working long days and nights to stand up opportunities to engage our community and gather that feedback. We're hoping that we can push a lot of, you know, a lot of awareness around what's going to happen in the next couple of days so that hopefully you all start to see some more of that communication come your way. But this is the opportunity again for us to kind of get more insight from you all, but the team is here, ready, not just our team, but even again, some of the members that have been working with the long-range planning process to try to answer any questions in any community where we need to meet. Ms., Dr. Holly, did you want to share about the Equity by Design process and some of the time that's been engaged? Go on, come on up.
I would like to refer to Matias.
Sure.
I think he is, he was well versed in how this unfolded and how it's all about.
Sure.
After I put you on the spot, I...
Absolutely. I mean, I think, you know, I, I don't disagree, and I hate to use double negatives, that, you know, we, the communication plan and the process needs to improve and will improve. I also want to communicate that, you know, when we started this process, you know, in March of 2021, it was a delayed start, you know, and frankly, that was tied to the transition of the superintendent that was in, that was coming in at that time, a lot of movement, the pandemic, and we would have wanted to very much start earlier. At that time, we knew that we had to complete the assessments, we came before the board in August and laid out a roadmap, so to speak, to begin the long-range planning process and, and really do it diligently and lean in a way that's never been done before, right, using the Equity by Design model. And so, you know, Dr. Holly, her team, all the feedback we got along the way, you know, created a really unique opportunity for us to do things totally differently. But it also takes time, you know, and it's, sometimes it was two steps forward, one step back. You know, our community would, and our, and our long-range planning committees would, would kind of hold us, they would hold us accountable. You know, they would tell us, you know, we really want to participate in this, this is what we think is appropriate and absolutely. And, you know, sometimes you'll hear me want to move forward with the work because there's a lot of things competing for, for, for time. And so, you know, we, we did our very, very best with the time constraints that we had, acknowledging that a missed opportunity for this district would be almost catastrophic. Our lean budgets that we have now adopted, the state of our infrastructure, just, you know, the, what we've learned through the pandemic, how we support our staff and teachers and students, all of these things created an opportunity that was worth pursuing. And we acknowledge that if we missed it, we don't know when it would come back around again. And so, I do agree, there's absolutely room for improvement when it comes to communications. I can tell you that, you know, the committees have worked extremely hard and put in hundreds and hundreds of hours as our, as our staff to get to this point. And we have to make up, you know, and continue to build that trust. But I, I think that we're in as good a place as we can be given the time constraints that we've had. But we got to improve and we've got ways to do that and we're all in and Dr. Mays and I have conversations about it all the time and it's got to get better. I don't know, Ally, if you want to say anything?
Just wanted to respond a little bit more directly to the specific question about, there isn't a lot of time left, but just to make sure that we say out loud what the opportunities that remain are up until the 20th, but we do have that Bond Steering Committee meeting tomorrow. There is public comment during that meeting. We will also, there is also discussion of hosting a Bond Steering Committee meeting on Saturday. Just understanding that the last time around, this can tend to go late in the evening and be able to have the opportunity to come back around, do some quality control and make sure we check our work and are happy with what it is the Bond Steering Committee wants to propose. And then the following week, obviously, we have that teacher housing opportunity. So, there are a few upcoming opportunities, and I apologize, Thursday night is the, it will be in Spanish. We were going to do Spanish only, but we chose to, we're going to be offering English interpretation and there will be English language breakout. So, there is one additional opportunity that will be English and Spanish. And so, those were, are some of the opportunities and we're happy to, we hope that people will continue doing that. We did leave the survey open, we were going to close it so that we could compile this document for y'all. We chose to leave it open so that if people are kind of learning about this, coming back from their vacations and still want to get that input in, we have that still open.
Is there an easily stated reason why we have to vote on July 28?
Again, I think that, you know, Trustee Rodriguez would probably better be able to respond to that in terms of how or why we're looking at the timeline that we have. I think that, again, for us, we recognize that, again, the timeline is short and we get it, it present, puts you all in a challenging position. So, again, we're open to the feedback that you all provide to us today around the timeline that we've adopted.
Yeah, and just to add additional kind of input to that, Trustee Ashi, as Dr. Mays said, that's certainly one of the things we wanted to consider, but, you know, for us, we wanted to make sure we got projects out to our community and had a, a long lead time up until the actual vote. We knew that at the beginning of August, we'd be competing for the start of school, we'd be competing for a lot of different things and we did have an original date of later in August. But we do view the start of school as a very unique opportunity to share all of these projects with our communities. And so, that was kind of the calculus behind the current schedule. President Rodriguez?
And I'll just add, you know, I think we have to recognize that there's a healthy tension between the time that there's discernment with our advisory committee, with our committees that are making recommendations and the reality check about how much lead time a board needs to educate the community and bring them along to what we see all the time as we have been in the middle of both the pandemic and, and also the, the, what I was going to say, the audacious goal of having academic outcomes and equity at the same time that this board has led in our district scorecard, whether it's to segregated data across the board or whether it's whatever other issue that we've been involved in trying to do the right thing. So, there is a healthy tension there and I think one of the things from a governance perspective, I think you or board officers have encouraged the administration to bring this to us sooner than later. Because frankly, when we vote on July 28, and I think the board also needs to give clear direction tonight of like, are you interested in a November vote or something different? And the only reason I say that is because we only have about 90 days to convince our community and that is a short runway for what will potentially be the largest bond package we've ever passed. We passed the largest one in 2017, this will be the largest bond package. And let's not forget that our friends at the Austin Community College are considering a huge package of potentially 800 and something million dollars in their August board meeting and our colleagues and friends in the city are considering a bond package of which our nonprofit friends are advocating for $300 million there. So, when you add that up, that is a significant amount of impact to our community, which already has a 9.1% tax or slash inflation rate already to us, which again, gets me to the point that I made at the very beginning, which is, can you do a little better? Because I think we have to make sure that we're not significantly impacting our property owners, because we're already seeing that our staff and our teachers, I think one of the things we're asking for is an update about that particular slide, Dr. Mays, because I think what we're going to see is what we have, we have an instinct about, but we would like to see the facts, which is probably that our staff has a ring around the city of Austin, Austin ISD, they're living out there, we're, we're serving our students here and we're having that tension. And I'm not sure it's a healthy tension there, but a tension around how do we provide quality academic outcomes and equity at the same time, not losing sight of the fact that they're shifting sands of both competition with charter schools and others and also the shifting sands of our economic situation in our community as well. And so, trying to make sure that we are the economic engine, the educator, that we're teaching our kids to their fullest potential. So, I know I'm saying a lot there, but Trustee Ashi, I mean, you ask a really good question that I think there's a sense of urgency on this board, or at least I sense a certain sense of urgency that we need to make decisions in our governance role and educate the public or we need to pause. And I think for this, for this board, we need to make it very clear tonight where we stand on all of that. And I think that's one of the reasons why you heard me earlier ask Ed and Mr. Ramos and, and Mr. Segura to see if they could go back and recalculate some of this because I think it's going to be challenging. The legislature has not made it easy for us by slapping on that it's a tax increase. I think it also has an impact on, on voter behavior and voter turnout, which is different than the individuals that we serve, which are 52% poor and vulnerable individuals that probably need the, need the help and they're also listening to them as they're getting all input. So, there's a lot to do between now, which is July 19 and the 28th to get more feedback, assess and try to get us to vote by July 28. And I think what you see in this board, by the way, because I want to make this clear, this board is sitting up here on July 19. Usually, we don't have board meetings in July. So, we not, we not only just finished this year, we're back here on the 19th, we've had small board sessions, we'll continue to have them after this and we'll also have a board meeting on July 28th. And then we'll go back and start the school year in August. So, we're not taking any time off because I think this is important work, but I think we need to give feedback. We have a responsibility to our, our, our school district and to our voters to make sure that we're being clear about what it is that we want to do. I'll stop there.
So, I think kind of, kind of full circle moment, coming back to kind of the initial question and kind of the concerns that I have heard from people that have, have reached out to me. And like I said, it is a smaller number of people than I would normally have had reach out to me on what I consider to be a huge topic, a huge voting point, the thing, something that I normally get lots and lots of feedback on, I'm getting a smaller percentage. And most of the feedback that I'm getting is that this feels rushed. I do believe, this is my opinion, that part of that is because the last time that they were engaged in this process, they were basing it on information that came from the last Facility Master Plan slash Long Range Plan. And so, there are people that are surprised when they're not seeing, because they, in their mind, when they saw their school in years six through 12, in their mind, they're thinking, I'm in year six from when I first looked at that, so why isn't my school on there? Because I'm in year six. And I'm, I feel challenged as a trustee to be able to get adequate amount of feedback from the people whom I represent and then to turn around and make an educated vote on July 28th. So, I am challenged by that. I, I am interested in potentially looking at a later date for a bond, but I, I also fully recognize exactly what you said, Mr. Segura, of the, I don't even think there's an adjective to describe the situation we find ourselves in, in a facility position. And I want to be able to pass the bond because I do believe that if it doesn't pass, it actually does more harm than good. So, and part of that is me being able to have really quality conversations with people in order to make that happen. I'm worried I don't have enough time for that. I'm worried I don't have enough time for that. So that was, that was kind of my reason about asking about the communication strategy, because honestly, as I'm looking at just the community conversations that we've had, it's less than 1,000 people that is bond-specific, that deals with our specific bond packages. It's less than 1,000 people. And I worry that that's, that makes it hard for us to be able to say, yes, we've had adequate feedback on the proposal. So I will defer to my colleagues.
Thank you, Trustee Ashi. I would just recognize that you have had, I just want to recognize you for your service, because you've been on the Fat Pack Board and understand kind of the intricacies of how this works. Trustee Wagner?
I too am struggling with the timing, and I think the timing piece is, I think where I'm netting out is like in my conversations and listening to the conversations that are being had in my constituency, there's still a lot of confusion about recapture dollars, INS dollars, tax rates, all the foundational pieces and parts going into a bond, that we simply don't have the runway to clarify a lot of those misconceptions or confirm what's correct information. And so it doesn't give us a lot of time to start from, I almost feel like we're starting in a hole, because we've got to clarify all of that before we can get to level ground to start building the, the understanding of the bond. And that, from a timing standpoint, is really challenging. But I also want to be pragmatic about any advantages that November does give us, and I want to also be pragmatic about what challenges we will incur in terms of our facilities management, additional costs, planning we have around staff allocation to maintain the facilities in their current state, if we did wait till May or even further out. And so I think my question, at least amongst the many, many questions I have about individual projects and things like that, I think at an overarching level is, what sort of the overender right now in terms of what the picture looks like for us as a district in terms of our facility state if we waited versus doing it now? And what is the cost impact in terms of construction cost, doing it in November versus later?
I will start.
I know, it's a big question.
No, it's a great question, and it's one that we've been, you know, endeavoring to understand and just about every facet possible. So, so I think about this, and just from a pure operations, and we talk about pragmatic, you know, so last year, we spent $1.7 million in rental chillers, you know, and I think about that a lot, because, you know, these are chillers that we're renting at a campus for $10,000 a month. And, you know, we have many of them, and we'll continue to have more, and we will place them, and then we take them out, and then we'll have to get them back. And just last year alone, we spent $1.7 million in rentals, and that is directly out of our general operating budget. My operating budget has been trimmed to almost nothing at this point, but that's by design, right? We wanted to make sure that we left as much monies available for academic programming, for teacher salaries, for staff salaries. And so we want to be over time invisible. Like I tell that all the time, I want operations to not burden the general operating budget. And, and right now, when you think about the rentals, you think about the fact that last year, we spent $12 million in repairs alone, you know, that is not sustainable. The question becomes, you know, is our organization prepared to do nothing when a system fails? Because it's going, it's, they are failing, and we're, they're hobbling along and rental thing, renting systems to, to kind of keep them going, but there, there is a point where it is not sustainable, and there aren't any funds to pull from, unless there somehow becomes funds, but that's not likely to happen. And so, you know, for us, I think about that, I think about the fact that, you know, a, a six-month delay is just that six months, but really, in construction terms, it's, it's over a year, right? Because you think about the fact that you can only deliver schools in August, really. We have done in the past mid-year deliveries, but they're very challenging for our staff and students. You know, think about leaving for the holiday break and then coming back to a new school and all the complications around that. And so in August, you know, if, and if you think about November, and with a quick start, because we want to build quickly, because it is costing us very, very much to, if we, if we delay, then we can deliver school, some of these modernized, modernized projects a year earlier than if we waited six months, because that six months loses that window of delivering in August. You know, I think about the fact that, you know, escalation right now is 12 to 16%. We have seen some kind of flattening around steel and lumber, but for every $100 million on an annual basis, you're losing, you know, 12 to 18 million, you know, in a billion-dollar bond, you're losing five elementary schools. And so it's, it's opportunity, is what is the opportunity worth in November versus May? And I would argue that it's significant and, and worth pursuing, but again, that's just from my lens, given what I'm seeing, and it's all, it's all facilities, it's all numbers, it's all just us trying to keep this organization moving forward in the best way possible, acknowledging that I think we could do better, I think we have been doing better. And, and I don't know what's in front of us a year out. You know, I think two years out, I don't know what'll be different, and if we'll even have the fortitude to even pursue this. So I think about windows of opportunity, and I think there's one now, but it would be difficult for us to, to continue without something, I guess is what I would say, significant. I don't know how else to say it, Trustee Wagner, but, you know, I get kind of torn up about it. It's a lot.
Thank you for that. And when you start to talk about $12 million in repairs, how much of that would be cured with the bond projects that are being proposed right now?
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, it won't happen overnight, because we have to construct, but one of the things that I tell the team all the time is that whenever you actually repair a facility, like truly repair it, there are a variety of future costs that you now can avoid, right? Deferred maintenance, you know, we're carrying, you know, billions of dollars in deferred maintenance, and that still exists unless you completely modernize the facility. You know, if you're not attacking the roofing system, then, you know, in year four or five, you're gonna have to attack it. One of the things that we'll tell you is that this program, in its current state, only tackles priorities one and two, and specifically in years zero, which are things that are broken now, and in years one through five, only priority levels one, which are primarily life safety and security. And so there are tens of millions, about hundreds of millions of dollars in HVAC systems that are already having to be adjusted even in this proposal alone. And so I would tell you that it would reduce over time, and I think about, okay, so in year two, that cost would be eliminated. Year three, that cost would be eliminated. We would also have the additional benefit of a reduction in utility cost, which is our second largest line item in our annual operating budget. And so, you know, starting in 2017, we were at 21 million, and now we're at little, you know, little north of 17.8 million, I think, by the time this fiscal year ends, this year that we're in now. And so, you know, you pick up half a million here, you pick a million here, and over time, you all of a sudden have a sustainable infrastructure system. 2017 was a great first bite at the apple. It kind of did what it needed to do, which is stabilize the things that were truly failing. Now, this, this bite of the apple will allow us to really position this organization for decades to come. But it's not, doing nothing is, is very difficult. So it would take a couple of years, but we would get there. And that also doesn't include all the other things that may occur, whether it's winter storm Uri, whether it's some other event that just hits us that we have to negotiate. So we'd get there, but it would take a couple of years.
And it may be an oversimplification as well, but when you talk about the $12 million that went into repairs last year, that's effectively over 24 million taxpayer dollars, because if you want to quantify it that way, because half of the money that our taxpayers put in went to recapture for our MNO funds, whereas those $12 million, had they come from a bond or INS, would have stayed in the district at 100% and cost the taxpayer less. So I definitely want to make sure that we're continuing to hammer that point home, because I think it's really important for not just the folks who are in the trenches, invest in the schools, have kids there, but it's important for every taxpayer in the city that we recognize the, the true impact that we have with our INS or bond dollars versus our MNO dollars. And 12 million in a billion-dollar budget may not seem as significant, but, I mean, how much, Mr. Ramos, how much of a raise could we give our teachers with $12 million?
That would be a little more than a 3% raise for our teachers.
Yeah. So that's significant. Well, that, that's my question for at least this one. Thank you.
I might just continue that conversation just a little bit, because I know we talked about it, but if you can explain, when we passed the 2000, when this community passed the 2017 bond, we had $4 billion in deferred maintenance. That billion-dollar bond package and the 72% support of this community was able to cut that deferred maintenance in half, the $2 billion. Because of inflation and the cost increases, I think you shared with, with the board or with, with us, that that increased to $3 billion in deferred maintenance right today. So a 1.5 or some iteration of this bond package might potentially reduce that deferred maintenance by a significant amount, but we're always catching up with it. To your point, your goal, your strategy is to, to be behind the scenes, but I think when you have $12 million in potential costs, and we've reduced, you've reduced that to support teacher salaries, pay raises, it, it brings about a sense of urgency to why this bond is really important. And, and again, it hits that, that tension of like, we need to, we need this, we need this sooner than later, just to recognize that, that point that Trustee Ashi made, but I'm wondering if you could clarify anything around deferred maintenance that I might have thought.
Yeah, so, Trustee Rodriguez, it's a great question, and, and, you know, one of the things I often share with people is deferred maintenance is just fixing what's broken, right? Or what's going to fail. You know, if I'm, that, those dollars are replacing carpet with carpet, you know, walls with walls. It's not necessarily improving the student experience. And so when we think about deferred maintenance, that is simply to sustain the current student environment that we have. And I also want to point out that, you know, these deficiencies and deferred maintenance, it's prioritized. So there are things that are not included in that number that are also very important to some of our school communities, like paint. You know, paint is not necessarily a, a, you know, a make or break situation for a campus operating that day, but it, it is important. It's very important. You think about welcoming schools, you think about, you know, the, the environment that the student is going to be in, and it is important. And so you're exactly right, President Rodriguez, we have, over decades, accumulated a massive amount of deferred maintenance. We have begun to erode that away through strategic investment, and if, if nothing happens, it will do what every, everybody else in this community knows what will happen, is that things get more expensive and it balloons. But again, you know, if we get to a place where the things that are getting more expensive are things that we can control on annual operating budget, you know, the paint, the softer things, then, then we've got a shot. If it's the HVAC systems, the roofing systems, electrical systems, the plumbing systems, those systems are too expensive, there's too big of an impact to the learning environment, they have to be addressed if they fail. I have, I know that our superintendent and our board would ask me to do whatever is possible to keep a school cool and producing high-quality air, and we won't have that opportunity in the same way unless we have these types of significant investments. It's the only way to stabilize the infrastructure system. But you're absolutely right. You know, talk about the goalpost getting further, it's, it's almost like you do a whole bunch of work, and then all of a sudden, you turn around and four years pass, and it costs twice as much to do something, and that's exactly what we're facing. And it will cost more a year from now, significantly more than what it costs now, and that's just a fact.
I appreciate that, because I think one of the things that I was reminded as well is that we do have this accountability and checks and balances with the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, which does their work as well, so we appreciate everything that they're doing as well, because they're, they're a check and balance to all, to the Bond Steering Committee, and we have the, the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee as well, that's been doing a lot of work around 2017 bond, to get us prepared to this, because I think without having done that in a, in a good way, we wouldn't be in this position where we're at. But again, that sense of urgency, I think you're probably taking that away from, from the board as well. Trustee's?
Thank you. So this little format is fun, but it's driving me crazy, because I also have so many things to, am I allowed to make a comment on the dates and then ask my question? Okay, thank you. So I really, like, I do value Trustee Ashi's expertise on a lot of this, because she was the communications person for the last bond, and so, and I feel a little bit of that, I feel like July 28 personally is, is a little quick. I would love for us to consider voting for, voting on the bond package in August, maybe that August 11th meeting or something, like maybe that's like a little compromise, it gives us a little bit more time, but I definitely feel like this needs to go on the November ballot. Like, to me, like, everything, every conversation I've had with Matias is like, it has to happen in November, you know? Like, it's pretty dire, as you've sort of pointed out, and I believe you. I don't think we have necessarily the luxury to wait till May. We're gonna be in the middle of possibly a superintendent cert, you know, there's gonna be a lot of other stuff going on, we're gonna have a board transition. I'm like, dude, we, we just gotta work through this. But to carry on what, what Trustee Ashi was saying, which is, I actually feel like one of the ways we can sell the bond is not by trying to sell the bond, it's just by engaging the community authentically in the next couple of weeks, like engaging them really, really hard. There is some really good stuff happening this weekend, but like, if you, if you, if we have, if we do a good job before we vote as a board, that's gonna be even more effective than any kind of sales job I feel like that we could do afterwards. So I would be comfortable waiting until one of, like, an August date, like mid-August or something, that gives us just a little bit more time to have a few more conversations with the community, but with the hopes that we, you know, but I don't want to move till May, like, I definitely want to put this in November. So that's my little comment on that. Now I'm gonna ask my real question, if that's allowed. Okay. Mine is, you know, it's no secret that special education has been a real challenge in our district, and for the first time in recent history, AISD received a negative rating from TEA on special education, which is really not, you know, not a point of pride, I think, for us. So I think it's gonna be super critical. I know we have some sped stuff in these bond proposals, but I would feel much more comfortable if we had our Special Education Advisory Committee really take a look, maybe over the next couple of weeks, and come, and share with the board a list of recommendations, because they are truly the experts, and I, I will feel better knowing we've done the right thing by our special ed students if they have given their perspective on it and their green light. I know one of the things that I've heard someone bring up several times is the idea of having cameras in classrooms, in the self-contained special education classroom, so that might be, you know, one of the things that emerges from that. And if that is, I would really like to get a sense of like, which classrooms right now have cameras in them, and where are they? Is this an equity issue? Maybe we just increase the pot of money for this, as Dr. Reach had, had suggested to me when I brought this to him. You know, maybe we don't have to put cameras in every special education self-contained classroom, but make sure we at least alert parents that that is an option that they have, because I don't think we're doing that right now. But I think, you know, when you look at the Stetson Report, when you look at our data on special ed student achievement and see the huge disparity between eco-dis and non, you know, economically disadvantaged and non-economically disadvantaged special education students, it makes me, it's pretty clear that we need to do more to reach out to those parents who are maybe in Title I schools, and their kids are in special education. And so, again, I'll just say, can we, can we get a list of recommendations vetted by the, you know, coming from the Special Education Advisory Committee for the board, and then really seriously consider what they would say, or like their top one or two recommendations? Can you do that? Can you do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Zapata.
I want to do that, too. I want to say a comment and then ask my question, if that's okay. So, well, I'm in agreement that we need to put this in the November ballot because we have faced crisis, more than one, with the, when we lost Electric City, we were all in the dark. And we saw, and we learned from how terrible in some of our schools, the conditions they were in, when the students had to come back and suffer through the cold and leaky roofs. And so, you know, the crisis that we have encountered and then COVID, so we learned a lot about our facilities, which I think we cannot put off this bond. I think it's on us as trustees and the committees. You've done a lot, a lot of work, and we're going to need you to help us educate people about the importance of this bond. And I'm more for, let's get it all, the big, the two-point, the bigger money, because our kids deserve to have an environment, a good, safe learning environment. And I think it's going to pay off when we see their success increase because now they love coming to school because it's a brand-new school or it's a repaired school, and they're not cold and they're not hot. All that matters and goes into play when they come to school. So I just wanted to share that, that I would be in support of putting it in November. And the question I have, and it's connected to our academics, and as I was hearing and listening about the previous meetings, about CTE, it's, CTE is very important. It's not much investment in this bond, but there are so many students that graduate and do not have a plan. They didn't get into the associate's degree program. And I think we need to do better or improve, increase our students to get certifications so that there is a career. The electricians, the plumbers, they're in demand right now, everywhere. And so many of our students are graduated but don't have those skill sets that they could have had during the school year. So I'd really like to make a more, propose a more robust effort for our CTE programming so that it would help many of our students who do not want to consider going to higher education or in the associate's degree program, but want to be, have those other very, skill sets that are in demand, the plumbers, the HVAC people that could probably help us, their students fix their own schools, you know? I mean, that's an area I would like to see an increase for the bond package. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Zapata. Trustee Lugo.
So, continuing the trend, comment and then question. So I was looking at the May 27, 2021 Board Regular Voting Meeting minutes, and that was the meeting where we voted to approve the contract for that planning partner for the master facilities plan, which would then become the long-range facilities plan. And I was the lone trustee to abstain, and I remember my comment, I don't, not verbatim, but I remember the gist of my comments, that I understood why our district needed and still needs to invest in actually improving and fixing our facilities, and that I was deeply concerned that, on the one hand, kudos to administration for being willing to put themselves out there all over again on the heels of school closures, but that I was concerned about trust issues, right? Okay, so that was May 27, 2021. Then, in September 2021, the LPC Handbook was published. And in that handbook, just both for the public's good and for our own kind of nudging of recollection, it says on page nine, "Trustees may amplify our engagement efforts by hosting small group discussions tailored to their respective stakeholders. They may also use their networks and communication channels to increase participation in online input opportunities." So then, I look at the Long Range Planning Committee timeline, September 21 through today, in fact, and all the work that the members, as well as administration, has poured into this effort. So my question is, and it may not be answered, but I'm going to ask it anyways, I would really love to hear how the board individually and collectively thinks we did, how do we think we did in engaging our stakeholders through that period? The last thing I'll say is, we know that in Austin, as in all over the country, that the historic and systemic inequities have always hit people of color, have always hit people who are attempting to move upward economically. And so, when I think about that, and there's this perfect Ed Week article from, let's see, what is this, 2000, so from 2020, it says, "A Roadmap for Reparations in Education." And there's this beautiful line, and it says, "Historic and systemic inequity in educational opportunity is a debt that must be paid." And you know what comes to mind when I read that? I'm going to read it again. "Historic and systemic inequity in educational opportunity is a debt that must be paid." I think about those conversations during school closures where, God bless him, the previous super would say things like, "Are we being bold enough?" So I would say, if we wanted to really be bold, we would lean into this and say, "Historic and systemic inequities in AISD, this is a debt that has to be paid. This is a reparations bond."
Thank you, Trustee Boswell.
Thank you. I will also make a comment and ask a question. Comment about the timing, I want to go back to that. And I do think the question that we're wrestling with, and I appreciate all of my colleagues' conversations about it and questions about it, is just the balance between doing the work that we know needs to be done and getting this quickly and engaging in the way that our community is owed. And Trustee Singh, I appreciate your point that engagement before the vote is just as important as engagement after the vote, and seeing the deep equity-focused work that was done in creating and the long-range planning and getting to this point. And there's not much equitable about engaging our community quickly in the summer without a real opportunity to connect. And, you know, we can work very hard to reach out to people, but I want to be sure that we are really, truly seeking as much community input and community voice as we can, and we do have hard things to explain. We do have expectations that our community had that aren't reflected in this. We do have a process that people need to understand and really complicated school finance law and tax consequences that we need to explain. And, you know, I like the idea, people were expecting an August vote, which already felt tight and necessary, and I think July 28th does feel quick and does feel like it doesn't give people enough time to engage, to me. So I would love to hear tomorrow from the Bond Steering Committee, what you think, based on the work you've done. That would be helpful to hear from members about timing and kind of how you feel. And I do see the urgency. And I would say, hand in hand with that urgency and the real costs, and the cost that every cost that's not a bond dollar is double the cost for our taxpayers, that the fiscally responsible choice is to make this as big as we can possibly be, is to go with the larger. I mean, I think that is our fiscally responsible choice as a district, that does give us the most opportunity to send more money to programs and people. And that is really what our district's made of. So just want to share those thoughts. And then I have a question about the technology and the one-to-one devices, and I would like to understand more about that. Chromebooks for, you know, kindergartners, first graders, second graders, and I would love a conversation with my board colleagues just about our educational philosophy. Technology needs to be replaced and repaired. Technology means a huge investment in software. And how much time are our children at those younger grades spending on screens? And is that what we as a community are valuing and believing? And whether one-to-one needs to reach all the way down to kindergarten, first, second grade, you know, kind of how far down does it make sense to do that? Everyone needs access to some computing power, but I can't imagine kindergartners are taking computers home. And I would love to have a better understanding from the administration about that, and then with our community and my colleagues about if that's really what we believe in.
Trustee Boswell, can I just add a clarification? Because I think one of the things, and I don't know, Matias, maybe you know the answer, Trustee Boswell mentioned software. Is software defined as capital and eligible for bond money, or is software considered non-capital?
So it would depend on the application. We would have to get bond counsel to weigh in. You know, certainly if there's a capital improvement and there's training and software tied to it, then that's one way to look at it. If it's in isolation, then it's something different. But we can get counsel to weigh in on it specifically.
And thank you both for separating that and clarifying it, but if we're investing in one-to-one hardware, we are still paying for software somewhere out of something and perhaps out of MNO. And to what degree are we, you know, I'm not sure. We add a lot of programs, I'm not sure we take many programs away. And even with the tech, I would really welcome funding somewhere with the tech bond, if it's allowed, or funding somewhere from some other funds, to really take a hard look at what we are using, how it is being used, the benefit of it, and make sure that we're investing well in tech, and to really have that conversation about to what degree we expect our littlest kids to be on screens and to need one-to-one. Thank you.
Good evening, President Rodriguez, Dr. Mays, trustees. My name is Oscar Rodriguez, I'm the new Chief Technology Officer for Austin ISD. Thank you. Regarding the one-to-one, yes, the current proposal represents sort of a continued investment in that methodology and framework around the one-to-one for all students. Are there opportunities to adjust that scope? Yes, we can make adjustments to different grade levels to provide different ratios for the technology devices for instruction.
Trustee Anderson, did you have another question?
No, that's, unless the administration, you know, wants to weigh in on why they think that's important educationally, or whether they think that's important educationally. And then at some point, I would really love to have that conversation as a board, just kind of where we stand and what our beliefs are about that. Because I'm hearing from, you know, a lot of teachers, a lot of parents, that we're leaning very heavily on it in ways that may not be best for students.
So I think that we are having those conversations, and again, your feedback has been helpful, and we've kind of gathered that feedback in some of the other small group conversations. And so that feedback is something that we're taking in to try to inform, again, how we go about moving forward. To your point, the authentic community engagement, this gives us an opportunity to kind of field that question, to try to gather more information on the values of our community that we're serving.
Thank you, Trustee Boswell. And then I think what we'll do, too, Dr. Reach, if you add that to our governance meeting, just to see when the right timing is for that kind of discussion sometime in the fall or spring, probably in the fall. Trustee Anderson?
So for me, I had an appointee, Ms. Barbara Corbin Spears, on the committees. And so I've known what was going on throughout this whole process, and my community knew a bond was coming. We were just waiting to see what was going to be included. I fully support workforce housing and would also ask that the SIM site be considered for not only teachers but for families, and also adding creative spaces. I do believe, I don't remember when, but there was a survey done related to SIMs, I believe, asking for community feedback on what they would like to see happen at that site. And so I would request to see that. And I would in no way refer to this bond as a reparations bond. You know, meeting the needs of those who have been historically underserved by passing this bond is no way going to, you know, somehow say, you know, oh, we forgive you. Like, I say that as not only a lifelong Austinite, but as a former student who was traumatized in this district during desegregation. So do I think that passing this bond is somehow going to heal my trauma? No, I don't. Do I think it will heal others' trauma? No, I don't. So I wouldn't refer to it as that. I would say it's meeting the need of those who have been historically underserved. And I had a lot of people text me when that was said. I mean, it's, I wanted to scream when you said it. I mean, but I appreciate where your passion is coming from. But, so, in any event, I support workforce housing for teachers and families, and I also support this bond moving forward for November. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Anderson. We've now gone through two rounds of kind of questions, comments, feedback, input. And I would just go through another round and see if folks want to. Trustee Foster, do you have any questions, comments, feedback?
I don't know if this is going to come out right. Trustee Lugo and Trustee Anderson are on the same side. And I think that I really appreciated Trustee Anderson's point that when it comes to reparations, we're not going to get there simply by doing what we should do right now, because it's not enough. It would never be enough. And I also appreciate it, so I really appreciate what Trustee Anderson just said, but then I also appreciated the spirit and gist of what Trustee Lugo was communicating, in that this is something we have to do for equity's sake. But it's only a start. Lots more to comment upon, but I do believe brevity is the soul of wit, and I'm trying to practice that. But I have appreciated this conversation. Oh, and I'm all in for November, by the way.
Thank you. That was what I was going to ask you, because I think there's clarity, like, I think you're seeing a sense of majority of that, but I just also want to make sure that we go through at least one more round where we're clear about November or pause or how we have the discussions.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I am feeling the crush of the timeline and relative inexperience sitting in this format, from the DIA side, not really knowing exactly what to do with that, because understanding we need more engagement, understanding that equity by design, I don't want to say slows us down because that makes it sound negative, but makes it go more slowly and purposefully. And even with equity by design, we haven't reached enough folks. So I'm feeling the crush on that side, but I'm also feeling the crush of how do we, once we vote, if we vote a certain way, how do we ramp up quickly enough to communicate broadly enough? So basically, without having some magic silver bullet, what I'm hearing is the absolute So basically, without having some magic silver bullet, what I'm hearing is the absolute power and challenge that comes with a lot of good points around this. And I'm really appreciating this conversation. And at the end of the day, the one thing I know and feel strongly about is we got to get through to November with a successful package, a successful pass passage. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee. Trustee Ashi?
Thank you, and thank you to my colleagues. I appreciate the great discussion that we've had. And like I said, I want to once again say that my questions around the community engagement have little to nothing to do with the community engagement around the actual long-range plan, planning committees and the bond steering committees. It's actually with the delivery of the proposals that we only received a short time ago, and the time between that and when we vote, and the engagement of that piece. Because I think that is, to me, where the struggle lies. And I would, am looking forward to a conversation with the bond steering committee to see what their thoughts and things on that are. I very much appreciate the idea that maybe we could look at adding a few days. And I also understand that we're working on a timeline, that we need to get this package in place as fast as possible. It is one of those situations where I don't think there is one right and perfect answer. And so I do appreciate all of the perspectives that are coming forward, and definitely feel like I was heard. So thank you. I appreciate that. I want to ask a kind of a broad question, and then I am going to kind of go school-specific, if that is what tonight is designed to do. And I want to ask that question because I'm not sure if that is the place for tonight, or if we're more looking at kind of governance-level questions. Because I do have, I can go a little higher, but then I also have some more specific questions. So I'm going to look for guidance from you, President Rodriguez.
Yeah, I think now that we're in the third round of calls of questions, we've kind of gone the bigger, broader governance questions. I think there's some questions I need to ask the board about, like, the next steps. But I think if you want to ask very specific questions, I think now is the time, because the sense of urgency, I think, is something that's a theme among all of our board. So now is the time to ask questions and be specific.
Great. Thank you. So one of the questions are the people, the overriding theme of some of the feedback that I have gotten has been around understanding the descriptions in the bond proposal packages. So I'm going to use one very specifically, as it is one that has come to me a lot, around Galette. And Galette Elementary and their understanding of, it says plumbing, but there's varying levels of what plumbing can look like. And it says that they are, for example, that they would be set for a security vestibule. And for anybody who may have visited Galette's campus, you will know that all of its classrooms open outside. And so the idea of kind of what would be considered a traditional security vestibule is more challenged. And I think that the community is trying to understand how that dollar amount would actually be able to address what they see as potentially more expensive and challenging needs. And I use Galette as the example, but I have gotten similar questions from other campuses, saying, what exactly does this mean? When it says HVAC, does that mean they're replacing the entire HVAC? Or does it mean a band-aid to the system that's already there? Which then also brings me to McCallum. So both of those campuses, to me, kind of have some very unique and specific questions around both of them, in that McCallum's numbers are creeping up pretty high, and yet they're not set for a Phase 1 modernization. And so I was trying to, and you, and Mr. Seguro, you and I had had a little bit of a conversation around that. And I was wondering if you might be able to kind of put some parameters around that for the community.
So I think it's, I think you bring up a really good point, and it's something that we definitely want to clarify. And I want to kind of refer the board back to a point that I didn't make, I'm sure, very clearly. And that was that the deficiencies that were identified, right, and incorporated into this plan included really two categories. The first being things that are considered to be failing or broken now around two priority areas, being life safety and HVAC. And so if I go school by school by school, I understand, based on the facility condition assessments that were completed, what's broken now and what will likely fail one year out, two years out, three years out, four years out, et cetera. And so the reason that I say that, because, you know, one of the dollar amounts that's incorporated across all facilities is that first one, which includes things that are failing now. We call that year zero. And it's only around priorities one and two, which is life safety and security and HVAC. Now, when you do deficiencies, when you do assessments, you do them to replace what's broken. And I think that's important because we're going to have to repair what's broken. So it would not include a complete replacement. That being said, the other category that was picked up as part of this work includes years one through five, right, as identified through the facility condition assessment, priority one, which is life safety and security, right? We always view life safety and security as being of utmost importance. And then right behind that is HVAC. And so we attempted, and I would say we, I think the bond steering committee attempted to include a third code, which would do, you know, bond, which would do HVAC across years one through five. Unfortunately, that number grew so quickly that it wasn't possible to do it uniformly without really kind of busting the budget that we're even trying to start with. It was just such a big dollar amount. And so what we did is we said, okay, well, let's attack, let's focus on the areas, because we know that we can afford them. And that includes, you know, what I talked about, which is priorities one and two, year zero, which is things that are broken, and then priority one for years one through five. And then what we also did was we had a candid conversation with the bond steering committee, and I expressed my concern around not having the flexibility to address improvements where things were going to fail. And so one of the things that we were able to do, in lieu of going to that next tier, the kind of level three, you know, which includes HVAC years one through five, we included a $30 million allocation for HVAC improvements, and then additional $10 million for roofing improvements. And that kind of allows us to kind of bridge and continue to make repairs where we think that we need them. But it does not in any way complete the entire HVAC system. That's not what this is. To really do that well, I mean, you begin to kind of approach, you know, complete or phased modernizations. These systems are very, very expensive. You'll often find that whenever you touch an HVAC system, including the interior spaces, you're touching everything else, you know, and you're, the walls, the flooring, the roofing system where the equipment actually resides, the piping system, you know, in larger schools, it's the hydraulic piping, which is the chill water loop that goes beneath the building. And so, you know, each of these things are very, very expensive. And so when we think about, and the reason I'm saying this now is because I'm now kind of moving from Galette to McCallum, whenever the number gets to be very big, right, it's gotten big because you're touching so many things. And it's a significant improvement. And when you think about McCallum, you are approaching a point when you can now begin to look at that project as though it's a Phase 1 modernization. And because it's so much going into it, you're going to touch so much. And acknowledging that the HVAC system is an important and most critical part of it all, it affords you so much more because you're touching so many things, I guess is what I would say. And I do want to point out that back in 2017, there were projects that were previously identified as deficiency-based projects that kind of swelled to a point where they became a Phase 1 modernization. It will require us kind of just looking at it a little bit differently, figuring out how to truly address those system improvements. And I also want to point out that these systems, as presented to the bond steering committee and these deficiencies, were presented in a way to where they could be added or taken away, which means that they had to stand on their own. Now that we're seeing a kind of a combining of deficiencies and projects at a campus, we're kind of able to refine those budgets. And overall, our hope is that we can bring some of these dollars down. But to be very clear, the Galette project does not include a complete replacement of the HVAC system. It is truly only what is broken now. And for McCallum, the deficiencies are so great that, you know, you can begin to look at that project in a completely different way, because you are touching so many aspects of that building. And so I'm not sure if that was helpful, Trustee Ashi, but that's the foundation for, I think, the dialogue.
It is helpful. I think, and of course, as is often the case, the answer to your question leads to more questions, right? So and I think this again comes back to the combination, again, of looking at multiple pieces. So safety and security plus HVAC plus plumbing, or whatever those things are. So if you're looking, and then how do we define a safety and security issue versus a plumbing issue when the plumbing issue is that the students have to leave their classroom and go inside and badge to get in, and then go to the bathroom, to then badge to get out, to then get back into their classroom. So they're having to leave the physical space. Is that a safety and security concern? Like, how do we, how do we define what that is, and how do you separate those out? So that's the bigger, like, I'm kind of asking those questions to then drill down to when families and the AISD families and taxpayers and voters are wanting to better understand what a project is. And they read the Galette, and they say, I have more questions about that. Where do they, where do they go for that?
So there are two things. So I do want to point out that we did have partners that evaluated these campuses site by site, which is why you'll see variation in kind of how the project budgets have been developed. That being said, you know, they were based on deficiencies. And what you find when you go through the design process, and as you know, we do that with the CAD and depending on the project with, you know, with a variety of different stakeholders, it will change slash improve. And so we're always kind of at this, in this, you know, healthy tension between wanting to include as much money as required to address the deficiencies that we believe need to be considered in alignment with the guidance that the bond steering committee has provided, but also not be so detailed to where, once you design it and incorporate perhaps other improvements, you can look at it differently. And so I will tell you that our team is going through with our consultants, adding detail where detail is appropriate. But I don't want to set the expectation that you're going to be able to look at every project and say, okay, well, we're going to add, you know, three air handlers, or we're going to do, you know, this system. Because what often's happened, what often happens, and to be honest, what has happened in the past, is you see $2 million allocated for an HVAC system, and then you go in and you realize that in the two years it took you to plan the project, things have gotten worse. And this thing that was now three years out is now right in front of you, and perhaps that is now the priority. They're all tied to the HVAC system, but they're different pieces of equipment within that system. And so we have to do whatever is best at that time. But this is a really, really good planning process to begin to allocate dollars that address the things that are just broken. But I do want to be very, very clear, these dollars are not complete replacements. The really, the only way that you begin to even approach that is through modernizations. These systems are just so big, they're so expensive, and they're all in just very poor condition.
So, and then just for clarity's sake, to make sure that I heard you correctly, and that for anybody who's watching, understanding as well, that there is a, for lack of a better adjective, a tipping point where addressing deficiencies reaches a point where you're having to touch so many things that it turns into a Phase 1 modernization.
Oh, absolutely.
And that might be the case at McCallum.
Oh, I think that's a true statement. From my perspective, operationally, whenever we go into a space, we want to improve it. And when you're going into it and having to do the things that we're talking about, it's a significant improvement. And so there's no reason why you wouldn't want to consider how that space might be improved for the student experience. And then if you're going to do that, then you want to make sure that it aligns with our expectations regarding how new spaces are delivered. So yeah, you're absolutely right. And I would also say that that's the case for elementary schools as well. You know, not only in 2017, but even now, you get to some of these campuses that have such high existing deficiencies. And what's presented now, again, are just things that are broken, or security systems that are broke, that we'll expect to fail in years one through five. There isn't more than that than what we've, other than what we've included through modernizations or through the additional fund. So it's a good step, but I think it also reinforces the significant need. If you were to add just that next kind of level of prioritization, which in my mind is HVAC systems, years one through five, the number balloons to 815 million, right? I mean, that's how expensive these systems are. And so I think we have right now a strategy to do the best we can with what we have. And really, in our opinion, at least my opinion, I would say the best way to do it is to do it all. I mean, to completely have the system work with the space properly, with the electrical system properly, with the plumbing systems properly. And that doesn't really afford itself unless you do a modernization.
And will those tipping points be determined before we vote on a bond package?
Oh, absolutely. And so one of the things that I will share with you is, when we present things to the bond steering committee, you know, we presented them in isolation, just because, you know, things get built up and things get taken away. Now that we have, you know, I guess we'd say, like, initial consensus as to what should be included from a deficiencies perspective, we can evaluate the project and say, okay, if we look at it in this way, and if we maybe make an adjustment, a slight adjustment on the budget, then it can actually truly become a genuine Phase 1. And I think that's true of other campuses as well. It's not just McCallum. But again, this is something that occurred in 2017. It occurs in elementary schools. There is a point where, once you're in there doing all of these things, if you don't improve the student experience, you know, are you really doing all that you could? And so that's kind of what we're doing. Because you will have that information, and the bond steering committee will also have that.
Thank you.
Again, quite a number of questions, but I think I'm trying to, trying to stay in my lane and focus on District 7. And not because I think District 7 has the most important projects, but just I feel like it's my responsibility as the District 7 trustee to ask the questions about projects in my district. So the one that keeps coming up over and over again is the HVAC system at Bowie High School, which is connected to plumbing lines, since it's water-cooled. So that in turn has caused a lot of outages in the HVAC systems, both heat and cold. The hallways in the academic buildings at Bowie are not climate-controlled, which is challenging in both the winter and the summer months, and the highest heat and cold is cold. And then the last thing is, because we have newer pipe connected to older systems, we end up with a lot of leaks and water outages at the school. So the question, I think, on a lot of parents' minds is, since that seems like a really basic infrastructure need, what has been done already? And how does that dovetail into the projects that are proposed? And where will that get us as an end result with the projects that are proposed in the 22 bond proposal?
That is a very detailed question. I can tell you that the project buildup was based on not only the existing conditions, but also the improvements that have been recently completed and will be completed. And you're exactly right. Not even in the 2017 bond program, but even prior to that, you know, you heard me earlier talk about these HVAC systems and how large they are. There was an investment at Bowie several years ago to repair the hydraulic piping beneath the academic wings, right? And this is essentially the chilled water line that exchanges, you know, hot water for cold water. And those go around the entire campus, and they go back to the chiller. And right now, and so that system was replaced under the academic wing. And then it was replaced by way of the improvements in the 2017 bond program for the athletic and fine arts spaces. And so now what we have to address are the municipal water lines, which is obviously a very important piece of all of this, but also the HVAC system that extends into the classrooms. Because, you know, the loop kind of is classrooms because, you know, the loop kind of is now able to push cold water up into the classrooms, but then we have the units across every one of our classrooms and those are deficient. Those are from 1987, which is original construction. And so, this would be a significant improvement. The chiller is also a big problem for us at Bowie High School, so that would be replaced as well. It does not include enclosure of the academic space. That would be a different kind of magnitude of project, mainly because of the amount of air that is within that space and how that air would have to be, you know, heated and cooled and circulated. And so, that would be a different type of project. This project really focuses on addressing the remaining HVAC-related issues, the municipal water system issues, which is what you talked about, pressurized systems and aged pipes don't do very well. We had, I think, three pipe bursts last year, two of them significantly impacted the school day. I think we even had an early outage on one of them day-wise, like the students went home. And you talk about, you know, burden on the operating staff. You know, we get in there, we do the repair, but then we're sending bottled water, like, you know, pallets and pallets of bottled water. We're getting, you know, portable, you know, toilets sent over. These are all expenses and we have people working all night long to get this repair completed. Fortunately for us, in that one instance, the academic space, I mean, the athletic wing was available, but it's not, it doesn't work well on a campus that large. It's just, it's just a long way to go. So, I guess all that being said is that this is a, addresses many of those concerns. It would be one of the final, like, last large pieces, but I do want to be very clear, it does not enclose the academic wing. That is something very, very different and I'm not even sure, you know, I don't have a budget for that. That'd be completely kind of different type of project.
I understand because I know when we looked at the phasing of Bowie, that that project was significantly larger than the project that was added to the 17 bond, like nearly double the cost.
Yes, ma'am.
So, would it be a fair expectation that we shouldn't see the kinds of, at least, not sort of predictable leaks or, you know, anticipated leaks that we've had thus far, that we shouldn't see any more major leaks? We should see consistent temperature-controlled classrooms after the 22 projects were completed?
Or complete, when they're complete, yes. During construction, as you know, things happen. You know, many of our schools have been an active project site for many years. But, yeah, that would be, that would be my expectation, you know? And that'd be the expectation that we'd set for the team, the general contractor, the architect of record, I mean, all of them. And it's one of these things where, you know, you've heard the old, I guess, I don't know what it's called, but I guess, you know, I don't know, my parents call it something different, but it's in Spanish. But when they're like the weakest link in a system, right? I think about that all the time. You know, they're, until you replace the entire system, it'll continue to fail. And all of our buildings are experiencing this. McCallum is no different. You know, Northeast Early College High School, we had breaks there. And you replace the system and that system's great, but now the rest of the system can't handle that improvement and the pipes break. So, yeah, that'd be my expectation, trustee Wagner.
And Bowie was particularly challenging, am I understanding correctly, because of the foundation basically being laid over the piping structure in a way?
You know, a lot of these schools have unique construction methodologies that were done back when they were constructed. You know, I've seen, not to use Bowie as an example, but other schools where we have geothermal wells like beneath a parking lot, right? Geothermal wells are HVAC, you know, it's a system that we use to exchange heat that supports our heating and cooling systems, but they're wells, right? They go deep into the ground and there was a time in the, you know, late 80s, early 90s where that was like the best thing ever. And what we found over time is they were not being maintained, right? Back to the general operating budget concern. And they would fail, they'd be bypassed, and over time, they would just not produce the type of cold air that we would want. But then, they would, by some process, a project would get developed and they would put asphalt all over it, right? And so, you had things like this occur for decades in this district and that's just put us at a disadvantage. I think we're getting out from under it and this would be a really significant, I guess, step in that direction. But, yeah, the complexity around Bowie, complexity around many of our campuses just make it difficult. I mean, there's just miles and miles of pipe beneath some of these schools.
And then, just to round out the Bowie question, the secure vestibule that would be contemplated, would that be enclosure of the breezeway or would there be a shifting of where the administration offices are located?
So, one of the things that we always want to do is to make sure that the entrance to a school is clearly understood, right? I mean, there's a variety of reasons that emergency management department, all of our partners need to understand where the entrance is. We want to make sure that we control the way that any person who's not a student or staff enters the building. The focus would be in that entrance area, the breezeway. It has been a conversation that has occurred in the past with that community. And so, that would be the focus of the project. One of the things that you're going to see with security vegetables in general is that, you know, at high schools, it's just a different solution because they're just different campuses or larger. There's, you know, students that drive that will leave, you know, out of one part of the building and go to the park, go to the car and go to lunch. And so, it's just a different type of facility that we have to manage. But, yeah, that would be the focus of the project and that's where it'd be located.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Wagner. I think the question, oh, actually, there's two questions I have. And I think one, I'll leave till the end, but I'll make sure and share. I think one, I welcome Jason's kind of input around what that communications plan might look like because I think that's one of the questions that we, that has come up is around community engagement and the sense of urgency that we have. I think the second question is really to the board. I just want to make sure I kind of just set it out for the board. So, again, recognizing the tension about the time that we need to get input and the time that we need to do this. And just to give you context, if we choose to vote on a bond on July 28th, we have 101 days till election day. If we choose to do it on August 4th, which gives us a couple more days, that's 94 days until the election. August 8th, I'm sorry, August 11th is 86 days, which doesn't allow for much time for printing of the material, the educational piece that the, that the school district does, and also our part outside of the organization and frankly, all of the different committee members in reaching out to the community. So, I think tonight, we can do it in governance if the board, you know, kind of defers that decision to the board officers, but I'd really like to hear about kind of where, where we are. Because I feel, I feel the tension about kind of, and I understand, and that's why the sense of urgency of getting this sooner to us so that we can have our community engagement as well as a board. But, you know, with July 28th being 101 days and August 4th being 94 days, that seems to be like the outer limit of what we might be able to do. But I would be curious to hear y'all's input. But I think that will lead to the very end because I think we have to get some input from the board around that. But I would, I would ask Jason to see if he has any thoughts and comments about some of the concerns the board has had about communications.
Thank you, President Rodriguez, Dr. Mays, trustees. We have a communications plan that we are already putting into place in anticipation of a possible vote on the, on Thursday, next Thursday. Right now, we are designing templates and what we can for FAQs, fact sheets, getting ready to do the bond book, we're designing the design for it so we can plug in the facts and pictures later. We're also going to be creating presentation in a box, everything you need to do to make the presentation. Of course, the school bond signs that you see when you drive up and drop off kids at school that list everything that's going to be done at that school and a social media editorial calendar. What will happen immediately after you call a vote is a media relations push. There'll be a press conference the day after or whenever we, depending on how late the meeting goes. Also, then, we'll be sending Matthias and Ed on a little press tour. If you've seen them in action, they are great together. And I think they're going to be big hits on the morning shows. And we will be deploying Dr. Mays as his schedule allows. Our big events coming up will be, we have a booth reserved at the Back to School Bash on August 6th. And while we are doing that, we'll be beginning the social media campaign and spokesperson training, which will include everyone on the dais right now, leaders of the administration, also Bond Steering Committee and other people that we want to activate. For example, trustee Boswell earlier today was telling us about a mom in the Austin High vertical who is very well-connected. We need to identify those people in the community who are going to be doing talking anyway and bring them in. We're going to treat them like corporate America treats influencers. They are the, some of our most powerful advocates out there and we need to treat them like that. So, while all that is going on, we are also going to be identifying all the groups out there in the community who have the meetings. And we're going to be assigning those meetings to people in the administration and those influencers and, and y'all as allowed. I think the strategy right now is to use Dr. Mays for citywide events, use Matthias and Ed flagrantly and often. And we'll be, some of the first products you'll see us produce during this initial phase, when we're mostly doing visits to community events and Austin ISD events like the marching band jamboree or events at the pack or community events like trunk retreats and library events, we will start producing campus one-pagers, both digital versions in English and Spanish and printed versions to hand out and also posters for the schools. And there'll be yard signs that we'll be posting, that'll be directing people to a bond website where they can find out more information. That was phase one. Phase two begins at the end of August when we're going to be starting a series of virtual and in-person town halls in English and in Spanish. That's not to say we're going to have a town hall that will have both languages. We will have Spanish-only town halls, so they will be more authentic. That's when you're going to start to see the bond book come out, printed. And that's when you're going to start to see bond signs installed at the schools. Again, the media relations will keep going on. The tabling will always go on, the things that will start in phase one will continue throughout. That brings us to beginning of October, which is a month out, and that's when we start to spend some money. As budget allows, you're going to start seeing print ads, you're going to hear radio ads, directing people to the website, talking about whatever, depending on what package you put before the voters, that's, that will determine how we talk about it. And of course, it'll be exclusively informational, exclusively pushing and some of the free, some of the, I anticipate possibly needing to reserve some of the ad budget for correcting factual errors that are put out there, some truth testing. But while the paid is going on, we're still having virtual town halls, we're still having some in-person events and we're still tabling at community meetings and deploying the administration and, and you guys as necessary. I would love to take any questions.
So, one of, before we take questions, our board council was reminding me that everything that Jason was just explaining is about educating.
Oh, yeah.
If informing and engaging our voters versus what the board can do, which is actually go out and advertise for the bond, both through our individual purposes or through some other political efforts. So, just to make that, the distinction about, about that. So, thank you, Jason.
Thank you for making that distinction.
Yeah. Trustees, any questions? Trustee Anderson, your hand is up, sorry.
Is it possible for Matthias and Mr. Ramos to be interviewed by a couple of students at Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
To talk about the educational purpose of the bond?
I think that is a great idea and I think we should take them on a tour of a lot of student interviews. We should make a TV show just about that.
Perfect.
Yes, good.
I would like to make sure that Dr. Mays clears my calendar.
Yes.
To allow me to do that.
Well, you may end up with 74,000 interviews because that's the number of students we have.
They'll be stars of TikTok.
Let's see, trustee Zapata and trustee Boswell had their hands up.
The question I have is, so I know it's already been brought to your attention, Chief Matthias, about looking at those campuses that were promised back at the 2017 bond and that why they're not on this list. And I think, believe one of them is Martin, Martin Junior High. So, the only concern I have is if we're going to vote like next week. And there were some suggestions tonight, how soon will we know if there's going to be some revisions to this? So, then, then I will know, you know, I'm ready to vote for this, for this bond. The other, what was brought to my attention was also Bear Creek, who was a brand-new campus and it's on the list where it's a brand-new campus. And I don't know why it made it to the list, other than it's overcrowding when there are many other campuses that are in high-demand need like Becker and Martin, who are not on this list.
Trustee Zapata, so as far as the second question regarding Bear Creek, you know, one of the things that we are attempting to try to do, attempt to do, is to complete projects. You know, I will tell you that, you know, when we constructed Bear Creek, we built it using a smaller capacity, one that was 522 students. And there are a variety of reasons why that decision was made at that time and that was several years ago. You are correct, we, you know, we are projecting some capacity challenges at Bear Creek. We also acknowledge that the adjacent school communities are also over-enrolled or at capacity. And so, we think about, you know, you know, Mills or Keiker or Baronoff, you know, and also considering the fact that to the south, there's Williamson County, right? It's kind of, it's, so it's in a corner. And so, for us, we wanted to bring that forward, you know, have it be something that is considered and get feedback on it and then, you know, adjust as appropriate. And so, to your question about, you know, Martin Middle School or any other campus that we'll be getting pricing and developing an estimate for, you know, we'll have tomorrow with the Bond Steering Committee. You know, our team is probably already working on revised numbers just based on the feedback that we've gotten here on the dais. I can promise you that they are working. And I do some, I do know some of these numbers already. You know, we've kind of anticipated some of these questions. And so, my hope is that after tomorrow's meeting with the Bond Steering Committee and after spending time with Dr. Mays and getting guidance, you know, we'll be able to produce a revised package for consideration. But again, you know, we would want to bring that forward and I'd have to work with Dr. Mays, the Bond Steering Committee, but we want to do it quickly. We want you to have the information in front of you so that you make an informed decision. And so, our commitment is to do it as quickly as possible. I can't tell you specifically what day we'll have that, but I can tell you within a couple days. And you'll at least know the amount. Now, the question as to whether it's in the plan or not, that may be different, but I can definitely tell you what the amount would be, which, which is at least a starting point.
Okay. Thank you.
So, trustee Boswell?
Thank you. If I may, I have a question for Mr. Stanford about communications and then would also love to talk about a couple of specific, ask questions about a couple of specific campuses. Is that, do I have space to do that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I think we were scheduled to go to nine, but I think if we, if we can wrap up on 9:30, we'd be good.
Okay, perfect. I'll just get those out of the way then. Question about communications, I appreciate the really clear look at the plan and, you know, not surprised, of course, to know that you have something really ready to go as soon as there may be something to go with. So, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Have a question. You mentioned engaging the Bond Steering Committee and wondering also if the long-range planning committee will be engaged.
I'm sorry, that was it?
Fab PAC was our secret weapon last time and they were everywhere. You've heard Arthy call trustee Anderson the nice Fab PAC lady because we all saw Kristin everywhere and many, many other members of that committee. They really went out and did that work and I would just love to know what that, what you expect that to look like, especially because we have so many more people potentially to really go out there and people who are really deeply connected all over our district.
I meant to mention them as well, as well as members of the Fab PAC who want to I meant to mention them as well, as well as members of the Fab PAC who want to help. The challenge will be to calendar out all the community events and then arrange people. It's going to be a logistical issue. But we have a lot of people, and we're going to be ready to train them all in being spokesperson s, and everyone's going to have all the material they need. The trick will be the scheduling.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And then I have a second question about engaging with preschool families.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, if we're looking at projects that are five years out, we're looking at a plan that runs, you know, 20 years out. Are we planning to engage families who don't yet have kids in the district? Is that a strategy? Is there something planned for that, and how can we support that work?
So that-
And how can you support us if we are ready to go out and do that?
I would love it if you, if we could use you on earned media opportunities on that. And speaking at community groups that have nothing to do with school, a lot of times, you know, that's where we catch them, is they read the paper, they see, they watch TV news.
Okay.
But targeting them, that's, that'd be a heavy lift.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, question about specific campuses, and really piggybacking on trustee Wagner's question about when a project turns, kind of crosses, sorry, crosses that threshold into needing something that, you know, the repairs are too critical and too massive. Looking specifically at Austin High with the HVAC project and the plumbing, the electrical, the massive that's needed in that fine arts wing, I would love some information about whether fixing those deficiencies, whether it's either a marginal change, or whether that might tip over into that place, where that wing, the band, the orchestra, the theater spaces, might tip over into that territory. I know, you know, it's often faltering, the electric in the theater doesn't work, instruments are, you know, in danger of being damaged. And so I would just love information as we move forward on that. And then the other two things at Austin High, as you look at the security vestibule and the changes to the field, what would be involved in making sure those changes are aligned with that long-range plan, with the full-phase modernization plan that I know all of the high schools went through? Making sure that when that work is done, it is aligned with that plan, so we don't have to go back and redo that work and waste those dollars doing it twice.
Trustee Boswell, you know, we will definitely provide that information. I will tell you, one of the things that actually has been good about this process, or better, I would say, than previous processes, is that we do have secondary concept plans that we can rely on to determine what is a reasonable next kind of project to consider, as we address many of these deficiencies. And, you know, I would say in 2017, we didn't have that. And so when we talked about phases, in part, you know, Phase One modernizations, we were kind of at the 50,000-foot level. I would tell you now, we're kind of at the 10 and 15. There's still some things we got to figure out, but we're much better equipped to kind of winnow down to something that we think can be achieved, addresses the deficiencies, but also is in alignment with the expectation that's set through these concept plans, that were completed at every secondary campus that we, that we have. So we can get that information to you.
Okay, thank you. And I know that aligns with an increasing enrollment, with our scorecard, a lot of those things. So thank you for that, I appreciate that.
Trustee Boswell?
Yes.
I just remembered, we're doing some marketing towards pre-K, prescription, so we have, we have some digital lists we can, we can use.
Fantastic, thank you, that's excellent. Okay, thank you. And then the second question, I just want to share what I'm hearing most loudly from constituents, is O'Henry, which I think if you look solely at the FCA and the ESA, which I know, you know, that when, when we get the social vulnerability, it does cross that threshold. But when you put those two numbers together, it's, you know, I remember when my daughter said, "I'm the only person in my friend group who doesn't have a phone," and I was like, "Yeah, yeah, yeah." And then eventually, she was the only person in her friend group that didn't have a phone. And I think people who've encountered O'Henry for a long time, you know, say, physically, it is the worst middle school in Austin, and at this point, after work has been done, physically, it is the worst middle school in Austin. And, and, you know, certainly doesn't serve that 80%, 90% students with economic disadvantage, but does serve about 30%. It's not what some people assume it is, is, you know, 10% students who speak another language at home. It's the school that serves students who are deaf and hard of hearing if they choose to go, and has, you know, real deficiencies that people in the community know well, you know, that when it rains, it floods, that the eighth-grade hall fills with water, that there's a pump to take water out, that pipes, you know, all of the things. And I know it's, that's not unique. But wondering, you know, I see that there's $62 million in net costs over five years that are expected, and would love to just have information before our next meeting about what a partial or full modernization might look like, what the economics of that are, just to have the facts so we can consider that. And I'm hearing that from people who no longer have kids there, who will never have kids there again. And I know, looking in District Five and that attendance zone, there are six elementary schools that, you know, are on that six-to-12-year list. Four of them feed into O'Henry, and I know that, you know, there's, I think, no capacity to add any of that, but we could serve those same communities by doing something to really remedy O'Henry in a bigger way. And I know, you know, the air conditioning is not fixable, the plumbing rated at a zero. There are some pretty massive issues that I'm just hearing. That is the single thing I'm hearing most consistently about.
Trustee Boswell, you know, I think what you're hearing is what we've observed for many years, and that's that, you know, Henry is very problematic from a deficiency perspective. You know, the Bond Steering Committee, I think, had a lot of different types of information in front of them. You know, ultimately, as we, the Bond Steering Committee's working through it, didn't quite get to that level. But from an operations perspective, it is some, it is one of the facilities that does cost us quite a bit on an annual basis. So we can provide you the information, we'll provide it to the Bond Steering Committee, and then, you know, we'll take it from there.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
So trustees, we've done at least three rounds of questions, comments, feedback, and we're a little bit past our time that we scheduled. And not that I would suggest that we stay here till two or three in the morning, as we've done in the past. I would like to propose that we ask our superintendent-in-chief of Board Services to poll our, our board members to see if there's interest in scheduling the meeting that we originally had for July 28th, for the first or second week of August. I will tell you that, that I'd like to make sure that the board has the time that they need, but at the same time, I have such a great urgency to ensure that we can communicate and have the time to actually pass the bond. And so I think that we can do that with, by, oh, I'm looking for Dr. Reach. Oh, there he is.
He's having a conversation.
Yeah, sorry. So, so that we can get it finalized with the additional information that you all have asked of the administration, the requests around additional bond capacity that, you know, that I've asked, and some folks have seconded, and the ability to discern if that additional bond capacity can include some of these things. But I, so I'd like to make sure that we do that, and I would just say, probably no later, I hate saying this, because it's, August 11th is 86 days out. So hopefully, maybe the first week of August, but we'll poll our colleagues to ensure that we have at least some additional time to engage. And then we'll have plenty of other time when afterwards, but I think we're, we're in that, in that healthy tension time, for lack of a better way of saying it. I don't know, Dr., I just want to make sure, are there any other comments that my board colleagues want to make before I turn it over back to Dr. Mays to close the session, and then we will adjourn the meeting? Yes, trustee, trustee Ashi?
And just to clarify, President Rodriguez, this is not our last time to provide input. So we will be providing input to the Bond Steering Committee tomorrow night, which is also televised, am I correct?
Yes, it will be, it's, it's open to the-
Is it virtual?
It's virtual.
In person? So people can join virtually, or they can join this here in this room?
So just in case he doesn't, he doesn't have a microphone, so-
He does not. So it's virtually and in-person in this room?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, ooh.
Then we will also have additional small board meetings with the administration to provide more feedback and get answers back to some of the questions that we have. And then honestly, I think we have to talk amongst the board officers, and maybe we keep the July 28th as an additional board information session, and then we have a voting meeting the next week. I don't, I don't know yet, but we'll, we'll have to poll our colleagues about that, because I think, as we had, as we had talked before, I think when the, when the board governance role comes to us around the order to call a bond election, this board is very engaged and has, and has some time that it needs. And so we thought we could schedule this information meeting and then a voting meeting. It looks like we need a little more time, but at the same time, there's such an urgency to make sure that we get out, because there's, there's all this work that has to be done around it. So kind of that's where we're at. But I don't want to close the meeting without, trustee Anderson, if you have any, any other comments, or colleagues, anything else, before I turn it over to Dr. Mays? I just want to make sure. Trustee Boswell?
I just want to ask procedurally, so when it comes to setting meetings and making those decisions, the officer, the three officers meet and do that, and you really can't reach out to anyone beyond the three, because you risk getting to the quorum?
Well, we're subject-
But the three of you do it?
Yeah, that we're subject to the Texas Open Meetings Act. So in, when we don't meet, the board officers have a governance role to play, not about substance, but about just the administration of the board meetings, right? And I think one of the other things that, that also happens is Dr. Reach, as the chief of Board Services, can poll our board colleagues to get a consensus of the board as well. So it's not like we're doing that just because the three of us decide we're, Dr. Reach is getting input from you all around all this. So I just want to make sure, this is not just about waiting till the next meeting, as trustee Ashi has alluded to. We are engaging, we're meeting, we're talking to constituencies, we're part of meetings with our delegation, we're, we have other meetings in the community, we're engaging with the Bond Steering Committee, with the long-range planning committee. I'm sure we're going to hear from our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee as well. And so all these things are going on while we're trying to get to a consensus about what, when we're going to vote on it. And so we're, I keep saying this, but there is a great sense of urgency to ensuring that if, if we're going to do this in November, we need to make sure-
Say it again, I'm just kidding.
That we, that we collaboratively and as a team discuss and raise issues. And I've never known my colleagues to be shy about raising concerns, or being clear about what our expectations are. And so I think that's, that's the good thing about this board, is that we're going to be sharing expectations and clarifications, and the will of the board will prevail, as we usually have from, from a governance role, so.
Sure, can I say one quick thing? So, so President Rodriguez had mentioned earlier about the, the Community Bond Oversight Committee, and I just wanted to say again, like, if there is, we have a website, and they have all of their annual reports on there, because I have been hearing lately people saying, "Oh, well, we didn't even really spend everything we were supposed to spend on the previous bond, and this and that." And I just want you to know that, like, this committee works really hard to keep track of the expenditures of the 2017 bond, and the two co-chairs are actually two former AISD trustees, so, who I, just, who I trust. So I just wanted to give a shout-out again to the CBOC, and just invite anybody to take a look at, if they're really interested, email, email Matthias, he'll send you the report. But actually, if you just Google CBOC AISD, you'll find it. And there's a really huge report that says, like, exactly, item by item, what has been spent, on what project, what campus. I really want to just assure people that we are spending the money responsibly. Thank you.
Trustees, any other comments or questions? I really appreciate all the engagement and feedback input, and thank you all very much for being here today. I really appreciate it. Yeah, trustee Boswell?
I do have one question, if we're going to be polled on timing. Ms. Teague, do you have thoughts about timing? I know I had said that I would love to hear from the whole committee tomorrow, but I assume you have a pretty good sense-
Yeah.
-of what people are saying. I would love to hear your thoughts.
I do. Yes, there have been, several people have reached out to express concerns about the timing. This week was supposed to be another week for collecting feedback, and the meetings this week were supposed to be happening next week. So we would like more feedback from the community, and some more time, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
There is a sense of urgency. I will say that one more time. That is the theme I was having. Yes, I do, I do. Secretary Singh, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Sir, moved.
Having a motion by Secretary Singh, and a motion, and a second by trustee Zapata to adjourn. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes by all those on the dais, and this meeting is now adjourned at 9:25 PM. Thank you all so much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you all.